I'll continue by reading our mission statement, which is customary and very relevant. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity in response to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. Thank you all for coming. Our agenda this evening is just two items essentially. We're going to have a public hearing piece similar to many town meetings that we have. And after that period occurs, excuse me, I'll close the public comment period and then the board will continue on with discussions about how to manage this budget issue. So, in just a moment, we'll continue with this public hearing piece. I just have a couple of comments to make before we do so. This is, it's important that we're always respectful. We all, to each other, speaking. We might not all have the same opinion here tonight, and we need to be sure that everyone's voice is heard. I'd like to try to encourage folks to keep your comments to three minutes if you can, and that we all need to honor everyone's opinions in that I really don't want to hear any booing or a lot of clapping, that sort of thing. I'd like to do our best to move things along and, again, honor everyone's opinion. Through that comment period, I know it's going to be tempting for me, as well as others, to engage in debate about certain pieces of things that are made that might not be what is felt to be, how I might feel about a particular thing that was said. But I don't want this to be a debate between the board and the speaker, the superintendent and the speaker. I'd like to make sure that everyone has a chance to talk, and degrading into that sort of dialogue will not promote that, I think, very well. None of us are here because of this was our choosing. What we need to do tonight is find a way forward to minimize the impact on education of students. And with that in mind, does anyone first from the board like to take a moment to make a comment with the superintendent? Okay. So, my guess is we'll have several folks that I hope would like to speak this evening. And if you can approach the microphone, state your name. And I guess your address probably is important as well. And if you'd like to speak, form a line going back behind that microphone, and we can continue on. Mr. Thayer, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Greg Thayer. I am a longtime resident of the town, 31 years on Grant Road, and an observer of the school system for about 40 years. This is a tough time for all of us. And as I shared with a couple of folks, this is probably in 40 years the toughest day I've had teaching. And that says a lot. I've heard some ideas that may be useful to go into this. And again, I've said this to several people, and any comments I make I would hope would not be taken personally by anybody, because I'm looking also at what would make the less impact on our kids. And I believe that's a quote I heard from you folks last week, the word "impact." We spent three years doing an awful lot of work, including one person especially in here, Ms. Winterbottom, on something called NEASK. And we've put together some marvelous reports that say where we're at as a school district. However, they all came back limited. And it seems to me that us inviting some folks in to spend $25,000 or more to look at our school system and tell us something we've already determined that we're limited may be a waste of money. And that's not saying our efforts were a waste of money that we've done so far, but maybe getting people in to tell us what we've already learned about ourselves could be a waste, and maybe that money could be better used elsewhere. Some positions that we have around, perhaps we can put off for one year. And I think that's a critical thing. I've heard the comment made, "This is for one year, one year," and as we try to gather forces. And that maybe for one year, the position of curriculum coordinator can be put aside and let the department chairs and other groups pick up that effort. Because I think we can, as we did in the past. That's not to say the position isn't important, but I feel we can do this for one year. A bunch of teachers have all realized that we have classroom consumables, and that maybe for one year, we can find ways to cut the costs in that area also and reduce those expenses to try to make this a much easier transition. And I guess the other thing, too, there's a couple of others, but one of the others is that along the way, it seems like a lot of these cost savings have come on the backs of, let's say, the teaching staff and trying to cut programs that supposedly do not impact students as much, but yes, they do. And then maybe we need to see some of our administrative staff be willing to also hop into the line for those cuts and take some reductions in their expenses, too. But as I said to Ms. Hawkins earlier, hopefully we have time after this moment now when we're sort of in panic mode, to really take time to slowly look at the budget carefully. We're not in panic mode like we're in right now, but take time to really look at it and see if we can find those nickels and dimes. There was a famous person who once said, "If you take care of the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves." And so many small savings can maybe make up to be a very large saving, as opposed to literally going in and chopping large chunks. And then last, I just want to share with you folks, I think sometimes the best people who may have really vision on how to make savings in this budget are sitting in this audience behind me. And we have maybe sometimes a more intimate knowledge of the budget and little things that can make our education program still go forward without affecting them and still save some money. And so I would say, please ask these folks, because they know really where maybe some other savings may be found that other folks may not. That's kind of vix, I'm trying to limit myself to the three minutes, but I just may all of a sudden pop up again later on sometime if night doesn't go on too long. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable members of the board. My name is Mike Puya. I'm here to speak on behalf of Nancy Winterbottom. My experience with Nancy Winterbottom started when I was a paraprofessional in Newmarket High School. And I got actually to work with several students that didn't really like me very much, because I was making them study and do a lot of the things that they had listed in their IEPs. I since moved on to a different career, and later Nancy Winterbottom brought me in because she asked me as a businessperson to come in on school-to-career days and to work with some of the students when they would do career fairs. And I was able to work with students all the way from elementary school, which I thought was absolutely phenomenal, that Nancy would have that vision to start off at that young of an age and expose children in the elementary schools to various professions, and also work with junior high and high school students. In the course of doing that, as a photographer, which is my line of work now, I ran into some of those same students who didn't really care for my requests that they study and the manner in which I was trying to help them learn how to study. One of those students actually became an associate of mine, and she has produced work that's been used throughout the world, photography, particularly wedding albums. I shoot a lot of weddings. And she also had an internship with me. We've done a historical project here in Newmarket that was displayed at a local gallery that's also gotten some international acclaim, some of the work that the students did. So, in my opinion, Nancy Winterbottom really exposes the students to opportunities that they don't have otherwise. I work with a lot of other school systems. I'm fortunate to do a lot of speaking down in Washington, DC. I've met regarding educational issues and issues related to children and families. I've met Secretary Duncan. I've spoken personally with him even about Nancy Winterbottom, and I said, "I wish we had a lot more people like Nancy Winterbottom." I think that Nancy's going to be impossible to replace. I know that the Newmarket School System has some really good guidance counselors and other people who might be able to be a stopgap measure, but it's going to be absolutely impossible to take her place. And I think what I've seen with the students, the amount of energy, effort, and genuine desire that she puts in to help them excel, to see more of the world, to go beyond Newmarket and maybe one day come back here and be on the school board or do other things in the community, it just can't be replaced. I think it would be a gross injustice to try to budge, to stop this budget issue just by losing Nancy's position for one year in particular. And if we were to look on page 17 of the wonderfully-produced brochure that you have, the report of the residents of the Newmarket School District, I can't think of anyone else in the school system who's brought in over 120 different organizations, business organizations, and it runs the gamut. But that doesn't really tell the full story either, because there are legislators who come to a lot of events that Nancy has created. So, we have people from the New Hampshire Senate and the New Hampshire Legislature that are really seeing what Newmarket is doing in their school system that is so unique compared to a lot of other schools. So, I think if Nancy Winterbottom does go, it would be absolutely detrimental to the school system. But I also think that the school system would have a lot less publicity and a lot less awareness of people who are influential in the state when it comes to your towns asking for potentially more funding. Because it's certainly nice to see the Speaker of the House or the President there, the Senate, at some of these events that Nancy has arranged. So, I urge the school to reconsider this, and it would be my pleasure to continue working with the school system and Nancy Winterbottom indefinitely. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to step to the microphone?
Hi, my name is Meg Pelletier, and I do not live in Newmarket, but I work in Newmarket, and I work for TD Bank. And I would like to speak on behalf of Nancy Winterbottom, specifically because she has done an amazing job with the students. And I can say that because I have hired six of them. She has had me to the school. She has had me help them fill out online applications. She has had me talk to them about how to act in an interview, what clothes to wear, what questions might be asked of them, how to respond to those questions. I've also done her career days, and I plan on doing her career days in the future. But the six people that I have hired that have gone through Mrs. Winterbottom's program have been absolutely phenomenal. Let's see, Brittany Gilmore, Shannon McMenamin, Kevin St. Laurent, let's see, I'm trying to think of all their names. They're still working for me, too. Kevin just was recently promoted, and he's got a career path like you would not believe. I also have Sarah Johnson.
Sarah Johnson.
And, yeah, Sarah Johnson and Justin Small. And they have absolutely all been wonderful students. And you can tell when you're doing the interview process, okay, who's had some formal training in interviewing, who hasn't had some formal interviewing? And I can tell immediately if somebody has had that type of training. And every one of Nancy's students have had that type of training, and she has been so beneficial. Not only is she beneficial to me in my workplace, she is somebody that goes out into the community pretty much on her own time. As a member of the Newmarket Business Association, she goes out and she reaches out to all the business members of the community and constantly talks to them about the importance of her program and how important these students are at Newmarket High School. She is a caring, wonderful individual, and she really puts her heart and soul into those kids. So, I just want to say, rah, Nancy Winterbottom.
Thank you.
Blue Foster, 11 Langs Lane. Kind of first year new to this whole time process. With all due respect to Nancy Winterbottom, there's also 11 other people that are on this list that was handed out that could be possibly terminated. So, I just wanted to give props to them if they're standing here or sitting here in the audience. You want to talk about not impacting kids' curriculum in a school, it's not just Nancy Winterbottom. It's the other 11 people that I see on the list that's very disheartening that we, in our first budget, and I know it's not your process, it's also state legislation, we're talking about getting rid of five and a half teachers, respectively, some part-timers, but now we're talking about getting rid of 18 total, 18 and a half roughly, over a period of time. My question is, and obviously this is going to be give or take, I read an article in Seacoast Online that said, "We're trying to squeeze everything out of the budget as we possibly can." Looking back through some of the budget process, administration is taking a 2% increase. I'm hoping the administration is re-looking into that and saying, "We're going to take that out of the budget and leave it back on the table." If it means saving one teacher, even though it's miniscule, it's going to impact that child's curriculum, that child's education. To me, that's the most important thing. I'm standing in front of you as a citizen of the town. I'm not pro-teacher, I'm pro-school. I look for everything possible that's going to help benefit the curriculum and the education of a student. On the back of this, I see there's also proposal for middle school athletics. I went to high school in Newmarket, went to junior high in Newmarket. I'm an alumni. I'm an athlete. I played many sports at Newmarket. You want to talk about impacting a kid's life? Take away the only thing you can do, play sports. You're going to hurt nothing but the high school sports by getting rid of middle school sports. Kids are going to go elsewhere for their sports, and they won't come back. They won't do it. I hope before you decide to take that out of the budget completely, you look into a pay-to-play just for junior high. I can guarantee you that a majority of the kids that are currently playing sports in junior high, their parents would find the money for them to play in that sport, respectively, whether it's soccer, baseball, softball, whatever it is. Again, I'm hoping the administration is looking at maybe possibly taking that 2% increase off, because that's, kind of leaves a bad taste in my mouth when we have to lay some people off and others can get an increase. It's not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sylvia McCarron. I live in Barrington. I am here as the Chair of the Workforce Wellness Committee for the Seacoast Human Resources Association. As human resource professionals, we believe that preparing the next generation workforce has to be a collaboration between educators and the industry, businesses, and professionals. Your program here in Newmarket, the School-to-Career Program, is outstanding, and I can't tell you how often we have recommended to other schools we talk to to come and talk to Nancy about the program and how she sets it up and how it's being managed. As human resource professionals, I mean, we interview young adults all the time entering the workforce. And as Meg had pointed out, we can tell the difference when these students have preparation in this. And it is not just the academics that the schools have to look at. I think the schools have to look at the big picture and help businesses with the next workforce coming in. And we can talk for hours about how there is a lack of a skilled and prepared workforce. But this program is really an outstanding example, and cutting it, and I was reading your handout that, you know, there are some minimums students can still do. Minimums are not enough. They're better than nothing, but they're just not enough. So, to cut this program is just something that I hope you can avoid by all costs, and I don't like seeing any teachers cut. And I was reading about the second language teacher, the French. Growing up in a country where two foreign languages are required, I can't tell you how important all these programs are. But again, I'm here to talk about the School-to-Work Program, and I hope you will consider. It's an outstanding program, and the employers that we have on our committee and in our association value this program, and we hope it's not going to get lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Rossi, 15 Hillside Lane. Though I'm the enrichment teacher and I happen to be on this list, that's not what I'm up here to talk about. I wasn't going to speak this evening until I looked at the list of the programs that were looking at losing in the junior, senior high school. I have a sophomore and a junior in the school right now, and what I'm happy about is that my kids have taken some of these things that are requirements for college. But then I think, well, okay, so my kids made it through and got those courses taken care of. What about all the kids after them? We are putting ourselves in a position where kids are, I mean, we already have people moving out of our town. I'm the enrichment teacher, and I get recommendations, requests for recommendations for private schools, probably more than anyone else in the building, because the kids don't feel they're going to get what they need in our junior, senior high school. And we went through a NEAS process that's already been spoken about. It's almost, I feel like it was kind of useless for us to do that, because we're losing so many important programs. To tell a student if they wanted to take French, both my kids did, and one's still in French, "Well, you can't take French. Maybe you want to take Spanish instead. Take a VHS course." And my kids have been experiencing those as well, and it's great to have them, but it's not the same thing. If, you know, to tell a student that they can come to your school and get what they need in a virtual high school, why bother coming here if they're going to do it virtually? I'm very concerned about what's happening to our schools, our school. I mean, we've been trying to get a new building. We've been trying to beef things up so that more people will stay in Newmarket and keep their kids in our school. If this happens, I feel like it's like we're saying, "Might as well give up." And I was, wanted to speak about Nancy Winterbottom myself. Both of my children have had many experiences. They've gone on the job shadow programs. They've been brought into that program since they're in junior high school. Nancy Winterbottom touches so many of the kids in that school, it's unbelievable. She's an ambassador for our school, not only in our community, but communities all over the Seacoast. I think we just, I know we have a lot we need to do, but we have to take looks in other places. If we're going to buy one stick of furniture, we shouldn't be. If we have supplies, we can ask our community to help us with supplies. But let's see, let's try not to get rid of all these people that we need so badly and programs that we need so badly. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Mike Lang, 27 Spring Street. I'm here because, one, I'm an alumni of the school. I graduated in 2008. But on page two of two, I see middle school athletics and coaches' salaries. I'm fortunate enough to be a coach at Newmarket High School. I coached the junior high boys' baseball team, and I assist with one of the greatest coaches I've ever had a privilege of playing under and coaching with Frank Zabo. I coached with him the junior high boys' basketball team. Now, we all have shirts that say NH Pride on them. When we go to a basketball game, baseball game, you see that. You take athletics away from the junior high program, and that pride's gone. I know that this has nothing to do with what's on here, but if we're talking about moving our students off to another school, that's also taking that pride away. That being said, to see the middle school athletics is kind of a slap in the face to all the coaches, previous and present. We have a coach in here, Pat Heath, one of the greatest girls' coaches I've had a chance to coach alongside with. It's kind of a slap in the face to us, only because we put in our best effort to try and teach kids how to take pride in what they do. They might not be the best student in the classroom, might be a knucklehead, but when they come on the field or they come on the court, they learn a whole new sense of respect for who they are. And I have a lot of friends on the team. Four of them in particular, Ben Leahy, Cam Jordan, Hayden Thibodeau, and Alec Wood. They're all really great kids. And for them to lose junior high athletics would be terrible for them, because I see them going home, just sitting in front of their TV, playing video games, and that's not fair. Because being a student, a former student, I hated doing schoolwork. I was the biggest procrastinator probably in Newmarket history. Yep, Mr. Thayer knows what I'm talking about. But I dreamt of being Nomar Garcia-Para, Ken Griffey Jr., Mo Von. That's what kids do. They dream about being the next best athlete, the Michael Jordan, the Kevin Durant, the LeBron James, Kobe Bryant, for all you Celtics fans in here. But again, to take away middle school athletics is a huge slap in the face, not only to the kids, but to the town of Newmarket, because that's what we take pride in the most. And so, yeah, thank you for letting me speak, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tammy Pierce. I live at 45 Bay Road, and I'm here to represent Nancy Winterbottom. I'm completely new to all of this, being a new business. I own Organic when it did in town, and it's just been about a year and a half. And I got to know Nancy through owning my business and the school, Business and Career to School Partnership Program. She came to me just into the salon and spoke with me personally. I could sense that she was the type of person to get out in the community, reach out, and then hearing more and more about what she does for work. I actually got to see what it's all about. She had some of the girls come in and do a job shadow with me. And seeing these girls in situations that maybe they wouldn't have an opportunity otherwise to go out into the community and see what their potential could be someday, you know, venturing into whatever they chose to do and seeing that there are options, their excitement and their training with Nancy was so heartfelt to me. They were so excited to be in the salon with me and doing the work that I do and looking into, you know, a possible career someday, whether it's doing, you know, a spa or doing something else that they might have the opportunity through Nancy to see. So, I just feel like I wanted to speak out for Nancy. Again, I'm completely new to the Budget Committee and any of these types of committees. I'm a new business, learning, as Meg knows, about business and budgeting. And so, I just feel like having my own business and having that opportunity, I think Nancy offers that opportunity to young people. I know when I was in high school and in school, as this gentleman, the coach, was saying, I was not academically loving what I did, but I was very artistic and I was very social, and that's the route that I took. And I was, you know, being a professional as well. And I think these kids, again, it's just about opportunity. And I think if you, if they don't have the opportunity so much at home and they can have it through the school, then that's what they're going to want to come to school for. They're going to want to come to people that can show them the way and guide them appropriately and show them the opportunities that are out there. So, just being a local new business, I just want to, you know, get in the loop, be more involved with the Newmarket Business Association and learn more about everything. But I'm definitely feeling just so heartfelt about what Nancy does and the opportunities that possibly these children could have and wouldn't have otherwise. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Adam Schrader. I'm one of the state representatives for Newmarket and Newfields. And my family's been going through a very difficult time recently. And I say that because it's hard for me to be here right now, and, but that's how impactful and important the School-to-Career Program and Nancy Winterbottom, I think, are to the school system here. I would also kind of echo the words of the gentleman who came before talking about some of the additional things that Nancy and the program bring that are unique to the town of Newmarket, beyond the governor and state senators and other legislators. I think that it's the type of program that's unique to our town and is the kind of thing that will bring, or at least keep, parents here and bring new parents in when they're considering our town versus other places. I have to say that I realize that, you know, a lot of our hands are tied in a lot of these things, too, and it's really difficult. And I think that it was, it's from what I've seen and the amount of time I've been able to spend on it, it's not as though, as a group, anybody's going in and not looking things over carefully. Seeing the list here today, it's obvious that you guys are, you know, trying not to be in black and white to try and figure what we can do best here. in black and white to try and figure what, what we can do best here. And I noticed that Josh Davenport, one of the other state representatives, came in today, and he may or may not, I guess, maybe get up, but he, he might be able to say, follow me up on this a little bit. But in speaking about not being black and white about the issues, I would also say that I feel as though in a couple of years, some of our budget concerns here may get better. And not in the sense that necessarily that you, you know, additional state funding may be coming in, but in that hopefully there will be less black and white restrictions placed upon you guys as a group, upon, you know, including things like specific requirements that are mandated for specific subjects in education and things like that, where hopefully as a group or as a local community, we're able to decide together what we think are most important, rather than being told from a different place what's going to have to, what's going to have to be the case. And so, you know, with that said, you know, if and where we're able to, to stretch, I do think that things may be getting better. Hopefully, maybe in the next couple of weeks, Josh and myself can, can speak with you guys a little bit further about some of what we see going on in Concord and see, you know, if that can help with any of this issue at all as well. And again, just from, from what I've seen of Nancy and the program, it's, it's very impressive.
Thank you, Adam.
Hey, guys. Thank you, Adam. Sorry about your loss. Yeah, pretty much I could see this current budget issue's coming. And I am working to deliver flexibility. As Adam mentioned, there's been a lot of mandates. A lot of the mandates were from previous administrations. And while the State House likes to say they're not downshifting, I would say there is not a, the, the previous downshifts didn't get removed. So what happened is the downshift stayed, but the funding, or, you know, the partial funding didn't come back. Right now, the best way out of that, that I see is to remove the restrictions and deliver flexibility, and I will be continuing to work to do that. Thank you.
I may as well speak. I'm Ann McCurry. I live at 5 Jerry Avenue, and I work at the Newmarket High School. I kind of want to, is there any way you can take this out of the hands of the legislature and make it a town, a community thing? I don't, I'm not aware of things you can do, but what I'm talking about really is like having a, a community pulled together to save our school, to save these positions, and maybe not adding any taxes, you know, property taxes or anything like that, but doing a community drive to save, it's what, $325,000? What is our population in Newmarket? How many people do we have in this town? And how many people would be willing to give a small amount to a collection to save our teachers? And I know for one that I would, and I would give 10% of my pay today to keep the people that are there. And I know that's been done at the Kittery Trading Post. They had a problem there. They were going to have to let 10 employees go. And the owner there took them into a room and told them, "I have to let 10 of you go or you all would have to take a 10% pay cut." And they did take the pay cut. Every single one of them took the pay cut to keep everyone there and keep everyone working. So I think in order to keep a job for everyone, I think we should make it a community effort. We should stick together. The school is a community in itself. I mean, it runs smoothly. Certain teachers connect with certain students, and every teacher is valuable to their, to their group. Everybody has a specialty, and believe me, the kids are affected by losing anybody that's on that list. So there's got to be a way that we can do it. I mean, we all live here or work here, and this is really important. And we don't have to look to the government. We don't have to cut things. There's no mandatory saying we have to let people go if we can cover that, that loss, that amount of money. And it seems like a huge amount of money, but spread out over a lot of people, it's not going to be that much. I mean, take, take 10%, 20% of my pay today, I don't care. I'll find ways to make that up, but people are so much more important than budget cuts. And we need to really think about it. Everybody needs to think about it. Give something up. That's all. And you, you can solve it yourself, and we'll all be happy. Everybody, you know? Is that some kind of dream or what? I just, I get so tired of government, you know, pulling you this way and pulling you that way. Don't let them do it. Figure it out. And keep all these people, every one of them is worth so much. You have no idea. No idea. I, I see the changes. I've only been there three years, but I've watched these kids, and they, it's an amazing place to work, really. I, I think I am more relaxed there than I am at home. You know, I like working with the kids and I love working with these people. So let me know. I'll go to door to door, person to person, whatever you need me to do, I'll go. I'll go knocking today. All right? So thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Can you come up twice?
You're starting a precedent, perhaps.
I would love, I'd like to follow that up. I think as a resident of Newmarket, that's, I love what I just heard. I, I think this is a strong community. It's why my wife and I moved here. And I think this is an opportunity for us to come together as a community and solve this problem. And I also think it's wise to not rely on the state. Thank you.
Hi, Jill Berry, 29 Ladies Slipper Drive. I'm standing up here feeling very disheartened. Every single one of those positions that are on there, I guess you can't measure how many children they touch, or even if just the fact that they touch one child and they make a difference makes it so important. I'm coming up here trying to think outside the box a little bit about, I liked that idea that just was presented, and I've been trying to rack my brain to think outside the box, just like my, my children learn to do in the wonderful enrichment program that we have at the elementary school. One question, because I've been at a lot of these meetings, I understand how the reserves work. We have those reserves that are for emergency use only, and I do consider this kind of an emergency. I do understand that, for example, we have some funds set aside for maintenance and repair and for special education and technology, and those are specifically for that purpose only. But is it possible that you could take the money from, say, the maintenance and repair reserve and use some of that reserve money to cover maintenance, repair items that were in the original budget? And by using that reserve money to cover those maintenance and repair items, that money that, from the budget, would then be available to cover some of this issue? I'm not sure if a vote's required. I'm not sure how that works. I think the school board has the ability to remove the reserve items on an emergency or as needed basis. So that's just a thought. I don't know if that's possible, but I was just thinking, I don't know how much is in the reserves, but if you have that money sitting there for emergency purposes, and this to me seems like an emergency, could we tap into some of those reserves? Because I agree with Mr. Thayer that we need to find the small pennies, add the small dollars up, and then see what we can do. And if we could just take a little bit of money out of those reserves, cover the items in the budget, and pull that money aside, we might be able to put a pretty good sum of money together to help to solve this problem. Those are just some thoughts.
My name's Kayla Reeves, and I'm in eighth grade, and I'm here to speak to the eighth grade teachers and the rest of them. And I kind of want to work with Ms. Winterbottom next year, and so...
Why?
Why? Because I think it'd be a great opportunity to learn about what she has to do and stuff like that. And for the French teachers, I would, I was thinking about taking French because I'm part French, and so I think it'd be cool to learn the language, but if there won't be a teacher there to learn it, then what's the point? And if Spanish is already filled up, then people won't be able to take a language, and that's kind of not fair to me, anyway. And, yeah. With the athletes and stuff, I was thinking about joining soccer because I used to play it, and I haven't really done that much activity, and so it'd be great to have that opportunity and all that stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth, and I'm a senior at Newmarket High School, and I just wanted to thank Ms. Winterbottom for her cooperation with me, and also Ms. Folger, who has helped me graduate this year. Without them, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't have the job that I have now, and I wouldn't be going to college in the spring. Thank you.
Good evening. George Willent, 42 Shandor Drive. And first, I want to say that this is, I, from my perspective, I know where you're sitting. This is not an easy thing to do. Creating a balance like this is difficult. I came down here initially to support Nancy Winterbottom, which I, I wish, I echo the sentiments of everyone before me. I think a lot of people have eloquently spoken about what she does in the school and what she contributes to, to the school and the community, and, and for us especially, what she has done for the special needs community. But then I took a look at the list, and I began to realize that it was affecting a number of other individuals. And what, what struck me was is that in times like this, when you're trying to struggle with these decisions, it's very easy to forget the objective. And the objective here is to educate our students. And these cuts don't do that. You have teachers, people, and whether they're teachers or coaches or individuals like Nancy Winterbottom, they're all educators, and they affect, as everybody has just said, a number of lives. And that's the objective of what we have to do. And as you, and I, again, as you struggle with these budgets, there are increases in fuel, there's increases in maintenance, there's increases in benefits, and I can only, I haven't looked, so I don't know all your elements, but I can guarantee that the increase in benefits is probably pushing against these other elements. The point is, though, is if those grow too big, you won't have, you won't have people to educate. You won't have teachers to educate, and that is the objective. Please do not forget the objective. Some of these other, and I, I don't have an answer. I haven't, I can't sit here and say I analyzed it. But some people have come up with very innovative ideas tonight. Are there other areas of the budget in terms of maintenance? Maybe, and though I'm not trying to cut athletics, but maybe a pay-to-play athletics would work. Somebody just mentioned taking up a collection or adding, asking people in the community to add more. Hopefully, those other ideas will come, bear some fruit that can maintain the people who educate our children, which is what the objective is. Thank you very much.
Thanks, George. Who's next?
I just want to say one more thing. Ann McCurry again. I have two electrician sons, and any electrical work you need, they'll do it for me.
Hi, I'm Noel Jostcoke, and I teach ESOL. That's English for speakers of other languages at the junior, senior high school and have done so for 11 years and live in Lee. And I just wanted to point out for folks who are here in the audience, they might not be aware, especially people who don't work at the school, that there are a number of positions that are, have already been, I guess, decided to be eliminated that are not on the handout. My position in particular, but that isn't really why I'm up here. Art is taking a cut. Music is taking a cut. You've heard people speak about how important the arts are for a lot of our students who are not all that interested in the academic piece. Maybe they don't want to go to Harvard or even UNH, but they would like to do something creative. If folks would take a look at the statistics, the United States of America has the highest rate of cancer in the world. We have really serious health problems, the highest expense on health, and we're talking about cutting a program that is so popular in this school, and that is the Consumer Science Program. The kids, I don't, I, there's so many kids who go through Diane Evans' classroom and want to go on and do culinary arts. And they learn how to cook instead of just throwing something in the microwave or driving through the drive-through at McDonald's. Also, health, we have a, a new energetic, friendly science, health teacher. She's wonderful with the kids, teaching the kids from middle school right on up into high school about how to maintain their health, how to be healthy, how to not be one of those cancer statistics, hopefully, and how to keep themselves active through life. And I think if we ignore that, that's really being penny, penny wise and pound foolish. And anyway, I really sincerely hope that the, the school board and budget people are really, you know, thinking about these things and not just saying, "Well, we'll let them talk, and then we're just going to go ahead and do what we want." I just wanted to say that because I, as a single parent, I'm putting a child through, through college on my own, paying my mortgage on my own now, you know? Don't know where I'm going to go next, but that's my problem. But there's a whole lot of people in this, in this room who are worrying about the same things. And we love our, love the kids in this school. That's why we are here. And we like to work with these kids every day. We enjoy coming into work with them. But it's pretty hard when you're, you've got to deal with people at the top who, you know, don't want to, who want ahead and go ahead and get their little pay increase, even though people are getting, losing their, their positions. And I think that, that needs to be seriously looked at, too. Thank you.
Is the three minutes cumulative? I'm trying to, I'm going to stand up here and try and be positive. That's why I'm wearing shorts today. It's going to snow tomorrow, six inches. But anyway.
Go team!
On a very serious note, I want to remind the board something. I'm a pretty skeptic person, and no matter what cuts you decide to make, that position's not ever coming back. I don't care what falls under what budget, there's going to be something more important than what position you cut. It's the nature of the beast. So I want you to be very careful in your decision. One of the positions that I saw was French. Carol Smart, I'm assuming she's the teacher, hated me as a student. I was horrible. Loved me as a person. Helped me get through French class. Helped me graduate with a second language. And lighter recent crime rate, I'm probably going to go to Canada before I go to Mexico, so it's going to help me out a lot. But I want you to take it very seriously just because I truly feel that that position will never come back. You take away French, you take away Nancy's position. Unfortunately, that role is going to get absorbed by somebody else that can actually handle multitask, and that's not really what you want to do. Spreading other teachers so thin that they can barely accomplish what they're accomplishing now isn't the answer. Keeping positions in certain situations is more of a benefit, and let's try and run in the red if we have to. Who cares? But we need to keep educating the kids the way you can. And if you take away certain positions, you just can't do it because it's going to affect kids today, it's going to affect kids tomorrow, and probably five and 10 years down the road.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Putanam Puvaykam, and I do live here in Newmarket. I am part of the Laotian Association, and I am also the Assistant Director of the Neta Sin Lau of New Hampshire and Maine. I'm actually concerned about the ESOL program. I understand that Ms. Jay has been cut, and there's only one person left to take over the ESOL program, and that's from K to 12. To me, that sounds like a lot of work for one person. And I also wanted to know what happens if that person decides to leave? What are your plans to keep the Laotian culture or minority culture in this town? We have a heritage festival every single year. If there's no more Laotians, no more Latinos, no more Koreans, how are we supposed to have a heritage festival just filled of French and, I don't know, Greek people? I, I don't know, you know? Like, we're, every year we do a Laotian dance to show you, you know, what we're all about. We bring the food, we, we... about, we bring the food, we, we, last year, we had an event at the, um, elementary school, four hundred people showed up. I mean, the Laotian community provide, provided food, it was free for everybody. We didn't take a dime from any of our people who wanted to learn about our culture. Um, there's also a very large Laotian community here and we look forward to the ESL, ESOL program because it makes us feel like at home. And when there's, when my mom, she can't speak English at all, but she could go to Ms. Gardner or Ms. Jay because she feels comfortable to ask about how we're doing in school and, you know, like, we're, as a minority, they're scared to talk to somebody who speaks English a lot better than them. Um, and I just, my concern is what's gonna happen if that person decides to leave? How are you gonna keep the culture in the school? I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sheri Day. I'm at Three Ladies Slipper Drive and I think my children are very lucky to go to Newmarket. Um, one thing I don't see a lot of, or any of, really, in the proposed cuts, I see a lot of people, but very few things. And I would like to kinda see if maybe there's a way that we could look into eliminating things that maybe we can get by without, three hundred thousand dollars worth of things is a lot, but I feel like the people are way too valuable, but I could do with a few less flyers coming home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanne Lazarus and I live on Bay Road and I teach kindergarten in the elementary school. And I, um, didn't see the Jump Start program on this list of proposed cuts and I would like to advocate for its remain. Um, I can personally speak to the glorious benefit to the children and, um, the difference it makes in their lives, not just in kindergarten, but all the way through. And the year that we did not have Jump Start, I had kindergarteners not wanting to come to school, didn't like kindergarten, um, because they were just receiving, reading, 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 and weren't getting all the other pieces of kindergarten. Um, and without Jump Start, our other support program would be filled with those kids and then that level of kids that are currently in that ERI program would be out of luck. So we, we're gonna be backsliding. And it's, it's such a creative and fun way for kids to learn and I watch kids go into that program and they come back to the classroom and they're excited about the stories and they're excited about making the connections. And I just, I'd hate to see us lose that, it's such a vital piece. Every research shows that early interventions work and we are seeing the numbers higher up in our grades. We don't need as many interventions and I have to believe that starts down at our level. So I'd like to advocate for the remaining, for Jump Start to remain as one of our programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Just one more, I have to speak for Ms. Jay, um, for the Foreign Languages, um, the Culture Program. Um, she, um, there's a really large Asian population, I'm sure you're all aware of that, and, uh, in the school, it's very hard to connect with them. I, I've had boys and girls that would not talk because maybe they couldn't talk as well as they thought they should've and they kinda withdrew into themselves in class. And when I would take them into her room, she would work miracles with them. I, I saw them the following year and it was like you couldn't keep them from talking. And also, the, uh, I had a problem, well, it was the, um, American flag when we do the salute in the morning, and I had two children that did not want to stand up, would not stand up. And I said, I took them into the hall and I just said, you know, you don't have to agree with everything in this country, you know, you, you're not from here, but out of respect, if I went to your country, I would stand for your flag because it's just a matter of respect. And, uh, I asked Ms. Jay to back me up and she took them in also and said, you know, it's, it's, you're not really, um, putting down your own country, you're just showing respect because you live here now and you wanna be a part of this country. And she teaches them so many things that you don't even realize how many kids there are there that can only connect with this lady. I mean, really, it's a, it's an important position. It may not seem like it, but it's, it's very valuable to a large number of the population here. We have a lot of, uh, a lot of Asian people, they're very important and they all have something to contribute, so hopefully we can keep her, too. Not on the list.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Hill, 52, Lady Slipper Drive. Um, I would actually just like to second what Sheri Day was saying. Um, I would love to see the cuts come from things, um, everyday math journals, I'm sure a ton of money is spent on those. I know the district is moving slightly away from everyday math and towards, um, working with Mahasharma, so maybe we don't need to spend the thousands of dollars on everyday math. Maybe this is not the year we buy whiteboards. But, you know, I would also urge that as many cuts that can be made as things rather than, than personnel, I would support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Yeah, Porterada. Once every time, next in the Old Market, sixty-four years resident. This is about the, what the government's cutting, I mean, the state's cutting what, school aid, right? Or just passing a past budget we passed?
The, uh, for clarification, the, um, we recently, the, the town voted on a budget and, um, just a short period after that, um, we learned that there's likely going to be a three hundred thousand dollar decrease as a result of reducing the state's commitment to funding retirement.
That's what I thought, 'cause I wasn't sure what it was, meaning was about. But anyway, if you notice the state, when they run for office and conquer, they always say, "Tax-free state." No taxes. Come live in New Hampshire. And it's hurting us now because, I'll tell you the truth, somewhere down the line, you got one choice. And that's gonna be either have a state income tax, sales tax, or something, 'cause there's no way you're gonna get money to, year after year, they're gonna be cutting and cutting. I mean, it's up to you people to do something about it, or our representatives have to do something about getting more money into the state. Nobody brings it up, they're all afraid of saying, oh, state income tax. Hey, this is what you're gonna have to get if you wanna keep all your teachers or get a better education. I, I entered into my education in Massachusetts, a large high school, twelve hundred pupils. And there was all kind of opportunities for me. You even had a cadet corps and all these extra, if you were good, smart, and math, you were promoted to another class to, so you won't be behind and all this stuff here. Somewhere along the line, this is the, you either gotta have state income tax or sales tax or both. I mean, I'm sorry, that's, that's the only thing I can see because I don't think it's gonna get any better. Thank you. I'll leave you now.
Thank you.
I just wanted to speak about the enrichment teacher position. Um, I just think it's, it's such an asset to the elementary school. Um, I think it's critically important to challenge our top students as well as also challenge the, the others that receive the critical thinking and all the, the things that might be outside of your average, the, the regular curriculum. And I just, I, I really strongly feel like that should be not cut. I think it's a, it's just a huge asset to the school and I think it sets us apart, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Hall, 12 Wigan Drive. Just wanted to echo on the enrichment program. Um, I've got twin boys and both have been through the enrichment program, one is still in it. And, um, I think that, uh, if we all think, some of us have jobs outside the school and, uh, many of those jobs, I, I manage ten people. And all those different people have different skillsets. Um, some are brand new and need extra help, uh, some are veterans and they need different kinda help. And I think that partly, part of what you said earlier was that one of our mission state, or part of our mission statement is every child. And I think if we cut the enrichment program, I think we're not really, um, teaching and educating every child. Uh, we have a special needs program, which is excellent at Newmarket. Um, the classroom teachers are really, you know, bound to what they can teach in the classroom and the levels they can do. So typically, they're teaching probably to the average. And so I think we really need to consider keeping that program so we are, in fact, uh, teaching to every child in Newmarket. So, and, and Amy Rossi's done an incredible job, um, with the students and, um, I think that, again, it's about, uh, making sure that we make cuts, hopefully, when we can do it with things and not programs and teachers. Um, and again, I have a stack of things on my desk at home with private schools on 'em. I have twin boys and trust me, I don't have the money to, to spend on it. Um, so I'm hoping that, uh, maybe we can go with some outside-the-box ideas like getting the community involved and donating, um, cutting back on the things in the school and I'm not sure what the administration thing was with a two percent increase, but that didn't sound very good to me. Uh, so wherever we can make cuts, other than teachers and programs at the school would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Evev Reed, I live on Bay Road. Um, and my position is now on this list, too. Um, you know that I was strongly against the, um, elimination of the, um, school to career position. When I was called into Mr. Andruski's office, um, this afternoon and told about my position and he said that it was one of eleven choices and I asked what the other choices were and, um, when he said, um, elimination of French, I let out a very loud gasp. I couldn't imagine the school without French. He said, "Home economics," again, another gasp. Um, and many people have spoken about the value of these positions and I fully agree that, um, the people on this list can't, um, can't go. I do wanna speak about librarianship. Um, and as I mentioned before, um, the last time I spoke, um, about the Niasq, we've gone through this process, um, and we've come up short in a, a lot of areas, one of them being the library. Um, the, um, Niasq requires that you have a librarian. They actually want you to have a librarian before and after school. When I first started, um, I did work after school for an, well, let's say, I was paid to work for an hour, um, from two-thirty to three-thirty. Most times, I didn't, um, go home until closer to four-thirty and if there were students who wanted to stay, th- they were welcome. But due to budget cuts, that was, that was dropped and so, um, now it's strictly, um, the regular school hours. Um, but the reason I'm up here is when I was told that two paraprofessionals would do the job that Sharon and I do and Sharon would, um, would supervise them and if there's someone who's gotta be cut, she has the greatest seniority and, and she's an excellent librarian, so, um, I can, I can deal with my loss of the job. I cannot deal, for the sake of the school and for the students, the loss of a librarian position. Um, and lots of people think all a librarian does is, um, check out books and put them back on the shelves and, um, and when I've told especially students that to be a professional librarian, you need a master's degree, you can be a teacher with just a bachelor's, but to be a, considered a professional librarian, you need a master's degree. So you need more education than the teachers do. Just when I was in library school, just as teachers specialize in either English or science, um, chemistry, math, um, libra, librarians don't all do the same thing. We don't just, um, shelve books. Um, there is a specialization. You, um, you specialize in public libraries, school libraries, academic libraries, and even special libraries. Um, uh, special meaning if you were a law librarian or you worked in a doctor's office, those are considered special librarians. Um, and just as there is a speciali, specialization among those four areas, the difference between an elementary librarian and a middle school, high school, is night and day as far as the tasks that they perform. Prior to coming to Newmarket, I was in Hillsborough, I was a elementary librarian, so I'm, I know the difference and I know how hard Sharon works in the, um, the elementary school just doing her job and to think that she's going, that, that paraprofessionals are gonna do the teaching that she does in the elementary school, I think that's a disservice to the children. The paraprofessionals do a great job in our school, but they are not teachers and, um, Sharon has a master's in library science. Well, actually, my degree is library and information science. Um, this is supposed to be the age, the information age and librarians are information specialists. Um, I just, Sharon is an excellent librarian and, um, but when it comes, the one thing, and it was Sharon who told me about, um, this change, I'd, um, before I heard it from Mr. Andruski. And I sent her a quick email, "Does that mean you're going to be buying the books for, for my teachers for the high school classes?" And, um, if she's spending part-time in one school and part-time in another school, she doesn't get a chance to know what the teachers need. Um, I, I will admit, I'm not the best technology person, but, um, I do an outstanding job on collection development, on, um, I don't mean to brag, but I think it's the truth. Um, as far as, you know, getting the materials, be they books or, um, or audio or, as a matter of fact, today, um, Sharon and I met with, um, Pat Valentine because one of the things that the school is lacking and one of the reasons that the library is getting a limited is we have no databases. Um, and in this age of technology, the kids aren't using the, the books. They just go to the computers and, uh, they, they do a lot of cutting and pasting a lot of time. But the, uh- But the state library, in the past, provided to all of the school libraries, and maybe even the public libraries, I'm not sure about that, EBSCO, which was a series of databases. With this budget cuts, the state library was no longer able to provide that. And all the school libraries got very upset and started complaining to the state. This happened last year. And the state library arranged with EBSCO to give the schools a discounted rate, provided the schools would pay for the databases. And I, an invoice was sent to Dr. Lister last year. Sharon and I spoke to our respective principals, and they agreed that this was needed. And we sent an email to Dr. Lister, each of us, hoping that he would find the money for this, because it wasn't put into the budget. This was something that the state had always provided, and all of a sudden, after budget time, we were told we weren't going to get it. And it never happened. The state, Dr. Lister, didn't approve this. So this year, we've been doing without any sort of database. And so our kids are hurting. But librarians aren't just people who shelve books. And all the other teachers are as important. I just can't speak to them. I don't know their expertise, but I do know the importance of librarians. If I lose my job, it'll hurt, yes, but that's, what is worse is for the students, for the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Miller, One Merrill Lane. And I've been teaching in the Newmarket Elementary School for not as long as Mr. Thayer, but 22 years now. I can't say enough about all of the teachers and the programs that we have at school. We didn't have them when I started, and the change that it's made in the kids is amazing. So I would really hate to see any programs that directly impact kids cut. Some of my ideas, and you know, it's, again, like Mr. Thayer's, it's probably small amounts of money, but maybe small amounts of money could add up to more. One thing that, when Amy spoke earlier, she said, you know, we've moved away from the everyday math program, and we've done more with Mahasharma, which has been fabulous. But then I got to thinking, you know, how much do we pay the consultants that come in and do staff development for us? And I value the staff development that I've been offered here in Newmarket over the years, but for one year, perhaps, you know, not so many outside consultants. We did a fabulous training last week when we had the whole day off. We sent several, well, a bunch of staff members to get training in the bully prevention, the name I can't pronounce, but the bully prevention program. They went and were trained. They came back and provided probably the best staff development day I've had in the last 10 years for us. They were fabulous. And that had to have been cheaper than getting the actual program people to come in and teach us. And, you know, maybe we could do that sort of thing for a year and not have quite so many consultants. You know, they had mentioned, Mr. Thayer had mentioned giving away our consumable money. I can't do that because I have first and second graders. They need glue and paste, and they use up stuff like you wouldn't believe. But I don't need non-consumable. I've been teaching for 22 years. I can't fit another thing in my cupboard. You know, every year, I get money to spend on science items and things about nutrition and pocket charts and all this stuff. I don't have any more room. I don't need that money anymore. And in fact, last year, I gave some of my money to one of the new teachers because I don't need it. So, you know, maybe some teachers don't need the non-consumable money. Maybe some people don't need the consumable money. We are also in the elementary school, one of the very few schools that does not have a list of supplies the kids need to buy posted at Staples. And I realize, we have kids that can't afford to buy things. But we have kids now who can't afford to go on field trips, and we have a fund that helps them out. When my parents send in money for a field trip, it's a $4 field trip, some mother sends in five and says, keep the extra for a kid who can't afford it. You know, there are ways to help those kids and families who wouldn't be able to get the supplies, who wouldn't be able to afford the increased field trip cost if we stop funding the buses for field trips. I did notice that was on there. That's really, you know, it's not a lot of big ideas, but maybe it could add up to something. My other thing is I really wanted to speak strongly in favor of junior high athletics. I play hockey, and it's, you know, my favorite thing in my life, and it's very important to me. And that relationships I form playing on a team with other people are invaluable, even as an adult. You know, you can still keep learning and growing. It would seem to me, if we have to go to pay-to-play, again, you could have kids, you know, kids who can't afford, there could be some sort of fund to help them out. I don't know how much fundraising we do for junior high athletics, but maybe we could do more of that. No one's ever asked me to buy anything, and the kids all know me, so they should come sell stuff to me. Right there, we'll buy from anybody. But, you know, maybe some things like that could help out. And, you know, they're small ideas, but some of the first-year teacher salaries are small, too, so we could, you know, maybe make up one of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
George Willent, 42 Shannon Drive. I had another thought that actually was teed by something Mr. Thayer said and Mrs. Rossi said. I'm going to put my planning hat on, and it's just another thing for you to think about. But Newmarket is on the cusp, I believe, or on the edge of probably being a nice jewel in the communities of the seacoast. They have a beautiful downtown now. The mills are about to be turned around. And another major element of making this a vibrant community, and a community that people want to come into and creating diversity, is the education that's being received here. So I think you have another aspect to think of about what it means to the community. And I think we're already hamstrung by one aspect of that. Facilities, as you well know, are woefully inadequate. That's a topic, a bigger topic for another day. But what's what goes inside those, what happens inside those facilities that counts the most, and that's the education that's done by the teachers. And that word does get out. You've heard a number of people, you know yourselves from sitting on this board for many years, and from the people here, of the dedication of the teachers in this community, even in the facilities they have. I'm always amazed at how much they can give and do with what they have. So it is a major element of the community. It's a major element of what's going to make this community in the future, and we're on the edge. And I beg you to think about, again, the objective of the, is being the education. So a lot of these other ideas could be very effective in reducing some of these cuts. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If you could keep it brief, please.
Sitting here, I will, very brief. Sitting here and listening to all these people get up and speak on behalf of teachers, they are teachers and they're around. I hope the board has looked into legal proceedings to open up another town meeting to see if we can actually go back to voters, to the budget and the Warren Articles, in any way, if there is anything at possible, before one single person gets laid off. Reason being is I probably wouldn't have passed, voted for some of the Warren Articles knowing now that this shortfall would have happened. So if there's anything at all that this board can do at a legal proceeding, going back to the town to see if we can do anything with the operating budget that's already been passed, or Warren Articles. There was a roughly 800 registered voters in the town that came out and voted and passed everything. I'm pretty sure that roughly 800 voters probably wouldn't have come down and passed everything if they knew people were going to get laid off in the outcome.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Burley. I am a resident of Newmarket, 7 Stonewall Way. I also teach at Junior Senior High, and I am a parent of three children who attend the elementary school and also the junior high. I just wanted to speak to a few things. Everything deserves to be saved, but Nancy Winterbottom, she benefits both students, countless numbers of them, and also the community. The enrichment program, excuse me, at the elementary school, all three of my children have gone through it, and they have gotten immense benefits from it, from both reading and math. My fifth grader has learned so much that he is hoping to take 7th grade in math when he's in 6th grade. And he wouldn't have been able to do that without the enrichment program. The French program, yes, students could take Spanish, but there are only so many slots. Students need, they have to have a foreign language in order to go to college. Yes, they could take it on VHS, but it's not the same. I am fluent in German, and I didn't learn it through a book. I learned it through going to class, everyday intense instruction. It's just not the same. You have to hear a speaker. You have to have them hear you. The ESOL program is very important for people who are living in a different country and learning this language. I lived in Germany, and it's very difficult to try and communicate. And I was one of those ones, I'm a perfectionist, so I didn't want to speak most of the time because I was afraid to speak. So I understand, you know, about the different problems that the Laotians might have when they're in school. So to have someone as an intermediary is a wonderful thing. Athletics, I'm a reading specialist, and some of my students, that's all they have. They hate school. School's reading. And, you know, the thing that they look forward to is the athletics. And, you know, my sons play sports, and, you know, just having that bond and being part of the team, I don't know. It's just, all of these things are so very important to our community and to the school. And one of the gentlemen who spoke said that once they go away, they won't come back. And I believe that because that's just a reality. Other things come up. And if we lose these people and these programs, then it's going to make our school weaker, and people will want to send their children elsewhere. I just think that if we all came together and we thought of different ways, and all the different ways that have been spoken of tonight, whether it's fundraising or pay-to-play or the community support that Ann spoke of, if, you know, instead of taking our raise this year, the teachers and administration would give up 1% for one year, there are just so many different ways that we could raise the money. I just, I love being a teacher at Newmarket. I love my children going to Newmarket. And I would just hate to see the standards go down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Penny Elward. I'm from 55 Langs Lane, and I'm living on both sides of the fence. I am a teacher. I am on the list, and I am a resident of the town. And I've been sitting at the meeting, and I reinvented myself to be a teacher. I love what I do. I'm going to stick with it, no matter what. But I've been through the magic of technology. My son is at home, and he's watching us all right now. And as each person has come up and new things have been developed for him to hear, he was not aware of the issue with French. He heard about the health information today and was very upset. And he's concerned about his future in the school system. He loves the school. He loves the town. But now he's concerned that a lot of the avenues that he could have taken are now going to be closed to him. I had French for several years, and I learned because I had a teacher. I did not have a VHS. I did not have Language Lab. Language Lab is not as accountable as the real person in front of you. So I hope that we, as a community, can work for our kids and support the teachers that are here, because everyone is working very hard, and hopefully we'll be able to work through this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Lang again. I get a lump sum for coaching, and I don't need it. I would be willing to coach for free as long as it meant for a teacher to stay in the school, whether that be Ms. Reed or whoever else is on the chopping block, because the kids mean more to me. And to coach for free, I do it with Frank. I do it with Frank Zabel at the Junior High Boys Basketball, and I love it. I want to coach. I want to keep coaching. And the salary doesn't mean anything to me, because I would rather do it for free instead of seeing somebody else cut because I got what I have for a lump sum. So if that happens this year or next year, you could take it away. I've already signed my contract. But you can definitely rip that up, and I'll do it for free. I'd be glad to, just to keep somebody else in the school.
Amy Hill again. I just wanted to say, I feel like I'm constantly defending Newmarket to my friends who have left to move to other SAUs because of a better reputation. And admittedly, there are a lot of things that we don't have in Newmarket that other larger districts do have. But the one thing we do have is an excellent staff that are completely committed and dedicated to our children. And I think that even if the state is not going to value that, we need to try and find a way to value that. And I also, are you answering questions? No? Yes? Not, it's not, I don't think, I'm just curious what your process is after this meeting. And also, I think there have been a lot of really great, out-of-the-box-thinking-type suggestions, but I also know you guys are under a huge time constraint. So given all of that, is there a way to do this in the amount of time that you have to do this without cutting personnel?
In our discussion, I think, after we close the public comment, we'll speak to that. I think that question will be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, last call for questions for first-time trips to the microphone.
I'd like to speak from this side, please. Lynda Mantegani. At the meeting last week, I offered and asked to please not pay me my stipend next year. And I would like to challenge anyone in our district that receives a stipend to maybe consider the same. Boy, do I need money. I don't know how many people this has happened to this year. I've run out of oil three times. I need money, but this town needs this, the school, the people in it. So I'll figure it out.
Thanks, Lynda.
Hello. My name is Fred Bramanti. I am not a Newmarket resident. I'm a Durham resident, but I can see Newmarket from my house. And I am a member of the State Board of Education, and I struggled with whether I come down here and talk to you or not, and because I, I'd like to speak to you more of, more as a citizen of the state of New Hampshire who has the same goals in mind that you do. And I understand the pressures that you're under. And we're struggling with this in every district in the state of New Hampshire. I thought maybe I would say a couple of things that may help. I don't know, I don't know the goings-on of every school district in the state, so I can't tell you exactly what's going on in Newmarket. You know much better than I do. But, and from a state standpoint, we are in a redesign mode, a school redesign mode. I just came back from a conference in Denver, and this is sponsored by Nellie May Foundation, Chief State School Officers Gates. And here's one of the documents from the conference. And it talks about state policy, opening the door to competency-based pathways. And it gives three levels of how these states are getting engaged. And the highest level of all is redesign stage, and it says, and the only state in that stage is New Hampshire. It says, "New Hampshire has taken the bold step of declaring full high school redesign, replacing the time-based system with a competency-based." There was recently an article on the front page of Foster's that, that talked about New Hampshire leading the way in dropout rates in the United States. And we have, we have declared zero, you know, that our goal of zero dropouts by 2012 and the dropout numbers in New Hampshire have plummeted. And when you read that article, it has, it has a number of school administrators from around the seacoast talking about providing these out of traditional opportunity, traditional classrooms, opportunities for kids that is, is keeping kids in school and, and, and that more of this flexibility of harnessing the resources in the community is, is helping tremendously in, in lowering that dropout rate. And, you know, when we put the standards together in 2005, our goal was flexibility and opportunity. And I think what we've done with those regulations is create more flexibility than you ever had before, to look at things differently. And I, I have, I brought a copy of the vision for high school redesign. I want to read you a couple of things out of it. In the, and it's available, it's a public document. You can, you can get it, you know, from the Department of Ed. And in the section called redesign and state standards, it talks, one of the sections in, in the regulations, harnessing of local resources. The specific standard states, "Schools shall strive to harness all available community resources, including but not limited to organizations, businesses, talented individuals, natural resources, and technology to engage students in achieving the necessary skills and knowledge." So I would, you know, I, I'm familiar with the program that's gone, that, that you have here in Newmarket, that's the school to career program. And, and have often bragged about it to, to other, other districts around the state and even outer state. And, and I think it's a, it's a beautiful example of taking advantage of that. And frankly, Newmarket was doing it before we put the regulations in place. So Newmarket has been, been one of our examples of, of a good way to approach this. The regulations also talk about extended learning opportunities for credit toward graduation. Specific, the regulations read, "Specific credits can be granted for extended learning activities, including but not limited to independent study, private instruction, team sports, performing groups, internship, community service, work-study." So you have tremendous flexibility in making opportunities available to your kids. And, and, and I'd like you to think about, you know, when, when you're making decisions like that, have you thought about ways that you can do this so you do not diminish the quality of what you're doing? That, I mean, to me, I understand the money part, that we're all dealing with it. But is there a way to do this with a surgeon's scalpel as opposed to something that is ultimately going to hurt? And then again, then it, it's the greater flexibility in developing a school calendar. You don't have to do the 180 days anymore. You can do something different if you want. You can make it longer. You can make it shorter. There are school districts around the state that have ta, that have taken advantage of looking differently at how you do a school calendar. So has that been, you know, have, have you, has there been any consideration for how you might look at that and, and how it might help in, in, in shaping a budget? And ultimately moving from Carnegie units to demonstration of mastery. The, we're the first state in the United States to eliminate the Carnegie unit. This is a huge deal. The opportunity is now there for kids in middle school to get high school credits if they can receive high school equivalent, if they can pass high school equivalent courses. There's an opportunity for, you know, kids to graduate early if they can complete those credits faster than they normally would. Have, you know, have you looked at that as a, as a possibility for, you know, how you might shape things? Do the right thing for kids. Do the right thing for your system. So this is, this is a, a subject that, you know, I do talk to school districts around the state about. And, and frankly, I consult with other states around the United States because they're looking at the same thing. They're looking at, how can we make school different than we made it before? And it's, it's, it's not about cutting programs that we valued because there's money issues. It's looking at, how do we, you know, how can we craft a, a system that is ultimately more successful, better for our kids, efficient, as efficient as possible? And I will tell you that, that if, you know, I'm just down the street, I, you know, I'm, I'm in Newmarket all the time. I would, if the, if the board at any time would, would want me to come in and sit down with them and talk to them about some, you know, some thoughts and just exchange some ideas on, on what some possibilities would be, then I'd, I'd absolutely be willing to do that. And in no way do I want, you know, you thinking that, that, you know, I'm just trying to be a good neighbor. That's, that's all I'm trying to do. And, and so the offer is there. I, I hope that, you know, I know how tough this is. I hope that you, you can get to a, a result that will be satisfactory for all the citizens in Newmarket and ultimately especially doing the right thing for our kids. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dee Willent, 42 Shanda Drive. My husband and I moved here over 20 years ago. We've had a daughter, Mary Helen, who is a young woman with Down Syndrome. And we've had a wonderful relationship with the Newmarket schools. It's a jewel. We're surrounded by other school districts that are much larger. And I have friends who are in that school district and we far and above have it in the school district, the best caring individuals in the school, whether it's the elementary school, the high school. And now, school to career with Nancy Winterbottom has extended our daughter's career from the school to the community. And it's, it's a jewel and I hope you think outside the box to keep these people on payroll at the school. Because there's no other school like it. The town is valuable. We need these teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
I came here with the full intent of not speaking tonight, but I want to say, first off and foremost, you guys have a very difficult decision. You did not want to be put in that. We did not want you put in that position, so we feel where you're coming from. The second piece, I want you to say, you may notice the sea of red behind me. The reason we, we chose red was because of Newmarket Junior/Senior High School school colors. We, we as a staff have pride in our building and we have pride in our staff and our community and most importantly, our kids. So just remember that as you're making your decisions. It's all about the kids last, first, and last. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we've had lots of opportunity and so any last word from someone who hasn't spoken yet? I'll close the public hearing.
I would just like to know.
If you could come to the microphone, please.
I'll try to reach. I, I, I would just like to know, and I would hope that no decisions are going to be made quickly like tonight. That, and I don't know if you can answer that for me or not, but I think that slow is good. I had probably one of the saddest days of my teaching career today, of all the rumors going around the building and it was hard for people. And so I hope that you all understand how much we care about this community. And with all good due respect, Dr. Hayes, it's a small community. It's, it's not what you came from. And so I hope you will keep that in mind. We're small. And I think we want to keep it that way and intimate. So I've, I've chosen to be here because of my colleagues. And I've had a wonderful, wonderful career here for many, many years and it saddens me. It saddens me that choices are being made so quickly about important things, your children. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. I don't see anyone else standing at the microphone, so at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing piece of the meeting. And I want to thank you all for, for coming and coming up to the microphone and, and speaking from there. It's not easy to do. It's not easy to sit here and, and it's particularly not easy to be in Dr. Hayes's position. So I thank everyone for, for coming out and being, being a part of this and for your patience with the process and particularly with, with our struggle with making some hard decisions. I guess I'd like to first speak to, you know, why the rush? We, we've been, you know, put into some of these, the schedule to an extent because of state statute where if we need to make changes in staffing, those individuals need to know by April 15th, for the most part, for tenured staff. That's right around the corner. So the timeline is pushed to be quite quick. I'd love to talk about, you know, redesigning education, but doing that in two weeks or, you know, four weeks is, is, is beyond a tall order. So, and there's a few other questions that are, that are out there. I guess one of them that, that I'm seeing first here is, is one that was, that came up in the discussion, which was, why can't we just have another vote? There is language in, I think it's the SB2 legislation, if I'm not mistaken, that you can call for special meetings in exceptional circumstances. And so that question was asked. So I wonder, Jimmy, can you, can you help shed a little bit light on that and if, if that's possible, what steps are there?
Let me, let me back it up just a little bit with some, some background. The, the, the issue that brought us here was that we had an approved budget already supported by the voters and the state in its budget deliberations has now, and as days go on, even more seems to be communicating, that it's not going to pay its share, because the state pays a share of the employer's contribution towards retirement. And that burden then falls locally. And because we have an approved budget already, the, the expectation is that we have to find those dollars, for us $300,000, within the budget that's been approved. It's not, it, it's a change in an expense, not unlike if oil heat quadrupled. We still need to heat schools. We have to pay those bills and we, by law, we cannot exceed the amount that the voters approved. So we have to find ways to manipulate our budget to pay that bill. And it's no different with this. Another issue in building our budget was in the area of adequacy aid, which is the main funding source of state aid. If, if one went by the formula of what Newmarket deserved, it was approximately $2.9 million. The, the governor and the legislature has, has, I think, very consistently committed to level fund districts. However, and for us, that's a good thing. We built that into our budget and that's a revenue stream. Okay? So there are different things. One's an expense, the other's a revenue stream. The, there are some districts, not ours, for whom the loss of that revenue stream is $8 million or, or anywhere's in between. It's huge. Thankfully, we're not there, but some districts are. And I draw the distinction between revenue expense because it's a distinction in terms of having special meetings. So, let me, let me, this is a memo from our attorney relative to cuts in special meetings and so forth. So it's an advisory to all the districts that they serve. "In the absence of legislation to authorize special district meetings to deal with revenue changes, the current law requires 50% of district voters to appear at a special meeting in order to reduce or rescind an appropriation or to add an additional appropriation." That's 50% of the registered voters, which I'm not sure the number, but I thought people said it was around 7,000. So you need to exceed 50% in order to have a legitimate meaning to change appropriation. A separate part of the statute allows the school board to seek court approval to increase appropriations due to a sudden, unexpected event requiring an expenditure of money. So in, in this instance, if one wanted to go to the, to, through the court system, you could seek permission to hold a special meeting. Personally, I think it's highly unlikely, the fact that every school district around the state is grappling with the same problem. There, there is legislation currently under consideration to enable all districts to call special meetings and to give those meetings the authority to respond to changes in revenue. So there are things still at work at the legislative level, but it really is only addressing those who have a revenue problem, not as we do an expense problem. And so, and so it's, there's no way to predict whether that legislation will be adopted or not. I mean, that's still in the works and, but it is, it is dealing with those who have revenue problems. Aquecy aid. For the longest time, you heard people about school building aid. Locally, Exeter was threatened with, forget the things we're dealing with, another 1.2 million loss in, in building aid for the projects they have there. Some, we're not hit hardly much in terms of catastrophic aid or CAD aid, which is for exceptional special ed expenses. But some districts are hit very hard. Those are things on the revenue side, there is some mechanism at work to, to deal with it. But for us who have an expense problem, it is, either you get 50% of the voters to show up or you go through the courts and that's probably unlikely. So that's, that's how I perceive it at this point. I mean, obviously you've got legislators here that are listening. Maybe the legislation gets changed to help deal with an expense side of things. That would certainly ease the, the problem that we're facing. That's a question?
I think so. Does... So there, there are a few comments along the way that I, I noted, you know, some outside-the-box thinking and whatnot. I guess I'd just like to, to hear from other board members about what, how they want to proceed and I certainly don't want to personally answer any questions of, are we going to have this done tonight? Or do we need to get more information? Or what about this? What about that? So anyone like to, to start that conversation or other?
I think one of the things that I would be interested in getting, Joan, is just a bottom line, if we were to eliminate the things, I know there's tons of things in the budget and we're going to have to make some decisions because obviously at the elementary school, they do need those consumables, whereas higher grades may not. But I would be interested in knowing what that figure is. But I would be interested in knowing what that figure is.
So, you, do you mean like smart boards and...
I think we were just to take everything out.
Mm-hmm. Everything out.
Right. And what would, what would that look like? And what would that impact be? Because we don't have that analysis. I'm sorry, I should have probably called and asked you to do that prior to this meeting. But I think that would be helpful in a future discussion if that's where we're headed.
And as a matter of fact, I don't know if it would be possible. I, I mean, I don't know if you can get a laptop and bring it down here. And I don't even know if you have access to like the, the accounting software to, to be able to kind of run queries on the fly like that.
Not down here.
No? Not down here?
No. No. Let me offer, let me offer a suggestion that, that hasn't come forward before, but it might be a way for you to, to buy some time. Every district is grappling with this. And, and many of them are doing as we're doing right now and trying to put together plans. Some districts have even bigger unknowns. So, not only are they putting together plans like this, but frankly, they're pink-slipping, all their non-tenured staff. They're, they are, there are dramatic things happening in every town. What, what we're building here is a plan that, that we really, we don't know whether we have to implement it or not. And, and, um, I think the odds are pretty good that we will, very frankly. But from everything that I have seen, um, there won't be a real final decision from the state legislature until very late June. In fact, I saw one communication that said 11:59 on June 30th. Uh, so, so I mean, very late June. But, but to buy some time, you, it, it, you, what you can do, and I know it puts people in an unknown position, is, is to not nominate, to, to, to non-renew, renew some people, maybe some on this list, very honestly. But not make a commitment to your plan till you get all your answers and you're really comfortable. And then, and then when you've got a plan, if those people are restored, then restore them back. We are up against this April 15th deadline in terms of, in terms of notifications. But we don't have to commit to a plan until June 30th. I mean, it's good to have a plan, obviously, and we need to do it as soon as possible so that people affected know. But I'm just saying, it's a, it, to me, it's, it's one way to get around this, this timeline, if you really, and I, I'm sure you feel the need to, to digest all that you heard tonight and to get more answers. But we're up against next Thursday night, I have to bring to you nominations for next year. And I guess what I'm suggesting is, I may hold back some positions as a way to, um, to cover our bets, if you will. And then, and then, then as soon as you really feel comfortable, committed to a plan, then that's the one we go for. And if some people's jobs get restored, then they get restored. It's just a, just a thought.
I, I would also like, I had asked you a couple of questions when I talked to you this week about the trust funds and the, the building and maintenance and...
Yeah.
$8,000 towards the propane. Did you, were you able to find out anything?
For some of that, Joan was away, and I didn't get to the, the propane piece, but the, um, because a question brought up about the trust funds. We have three trust funds that are meant for rainy day bumps in the road. They really are. And one is in special ed, the other is in technology, and the other is in, um, repair and maintenance account. Not a lot of money in technology and repair and maintenance. And frankly, there are, the funds are, are pretty much all already accounted for. They're, in fact, in repair and maintenance, we really already expended, uh, some. We just haven't cleared the, cleared the process. In, in the, the biggest amount is in the area of special education. And yes, when we developed this, we thought, wow, is there a place there to go? And the answer really is no. And simply because we've got, we've got, uh, in the works already, a very expensive out-of-district placement that was not budgeted. And we've also got a, a, a family that, that has moved in, that's going to also, we believe, end up costing us expensive money. So, so we really, when we looked at that special ed trust fund, we felt we're going to need almost every dollar of that to make it happen. I, I wish it were the cushion we need, because we would have made that work. But right now, it doesn't look to be any cushion anywhere.
So, I'm hearing you say there's not anything in this building and maintenance to...
Again, with a, with a closer look, there might be a few thousand dollars.
Not big chunks.
But not big amounts of money, no.
Chet, you've been quiet down there. Do, do you want to, uh, jump into the discussion?
You know, being a past educator, I understand a little bit of this. Been there and done that. Um, I, I don't know which way the board would want to turn. The more I listen to the people and listen to Jim and so forth, I was wondering if we could just go ahead with the, uh, plan that was given to us on March 24th and then see what happens from there? If that's with the board, that would give us our $300,000. And, uh, then as Jim says, the money comes back, we could, we could rehire the people.
So, you're advocating for going with that initial...
Yes. I, I, I don't think we can, we'd be here, we'd be here for a week trying to go through this other, other method of, uh, reducing, uh, staff, as far as I'm concerned, because there's a lot of things I don't want to do with that. But I think that would be the way, I would think I, I would support at this point.
If I could, I, I'd suggest that you do, try to do more than that to, to cover what other alternatives you may do. I mean, that, that plan, for example, was school-to-career coordinator completely. There are other things on here that you haven't really discussed. You may find, uh, you may find palatable, um, and, uh, and, and if that's the case, then people need to be notified. And you, you can, you know, even if they just have potential. We hold those back, and we figure it out, then, then we have a plan to implement. But, but again, it's, uh, again, the example of pink-slipping all of the, the non-tenured teachers. I'm, I'm not advocating for that. Please, don't, don't get that impression. Not at all. That's not my, my strategy. But, but communities are struggling with how to figure out how to deal with this, number one. So, and some, and there's, there's, in, in some regards, and I don't think it's ours, there's some, there's some fear that there's another shoe to drop at the state legislature that may affect us. And so, some communities are, are, are concerned. You know, we, one of the concerns that we're, that we're fleshing out is that, is that what, what may happen within the state in terms of special education, coupled with what may happen in the state, uh, I mean, in terms of shrink and shift program, but also what may happen in the state outside of education with health and human resources, which, um, if, if you were to understand the state budget, my, my impression is, education fares better than a lot of, lot of places. As tough as this is for you, uh, if you were in the health and human services world or at the state university system, you, you'd probably feel differently. But, but that those things could lead to diminished amounts of federal funding. Um, you know, Chet and I are on the, uh, on the board of, um, the vocational school, CECO School of Technology. And we were talking before the meeting, we just got notice of the amount, the drastic amount of federal cuts that were made in the Carl Perkins Act, which has long time supported vocational education. And so, there's some level of concern that that kind of an approach could also affect special ed, Title I, and, and positions that we fund through that could be adversely affected. So, so we've, there, there are concerns that other shoes could drop. So, that's why some places are, are probably pink-slipping more than they need to, because they know they need flexibility to deal with the reality come June. So, just wanted to suggest that on top of what Chet had said, that we may want to prepare for, um, flexibility in designing our plan, based on that.
Well, it seems to get worse.
It's not, uh, it's not pretty.
I, for one, am not comfortable sticking with the original plan that was presented to us on March 24th. And frankly, I would like to propose that the administrative raises be put on the board, because I just can't stomach the fact that people will be getting raises when people will be losing their jobs. So, I don't know what anyone else feels about that, but there's no disrespect to any administrator in this room, but it, if they have to feel it, I feel like you have to, too.
Well, I think the point that I'd like to make, too, is that nothing should be sacred, that we should have an equal, um, a fair and equal opportunity to have a meaningful discussion about every item in the budget, because every item in the budget has its value. And, you know, here I sit as a fairly new board member with a pit in my stomach because the state has put us in this predicament. So, I'm looking at all these faces, and I'm thinking, here we go. Administrators pitted against teachers. Programs pitted against programs. The board pitted against probably all of you. I don't know. That's not how I feel. But it's, um, it's a very daunting task that we have ahead of us. And I feel that, at least for me, and I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last board member, uh, board meeting, um, to hear the discussion. And so, I'm sort of getting caught back up to speed. But I would appreciate, um, having more time to, to process this and really looking at, I'd be willing to look at administrative raises. I would be, um, willing to put my board stipend up there. I mean, yeah, we all need money, but if we're in this together as a community, then let's, let's each pitch in. So, I don't, yeah. So, I would like, um, more time, please. But I guess I'm a little confused at your proposal, Dr. Hayes, and maybe, I, I just don't have my, my head around this. So, you're saying sort of just earmark random $300,000 worth of positions, and then we may have some time to flesh this out more by June 30th?
I, um, I guess I'd say it this way, okay? Uh, I felt, and that, and that's why tonight's handout really only addresses the 88,000. I felt that when it was presented that night, and I'll grant you, you were not there, that the only pushback was in this position. That there was, from my, my perception, good consensus, obviously, we didn't take a vote, but good consensus around these, these other cuts.
I was there, because I...
Relative to what else, okay?
Because I would have advocated for jumpstart.
Right. I, I understand. So, so, um, so it was with that in mind that this, that this was prepared. Obviously, that, that may not, that may not be the case. But let's suppose it is. You, you need to do whatever, uh, non-renewals are there.
Yeah.
You may also look at this and say, you know, that library media thing has some, has some value, maybe, maybe, and we should not do that in our renewal. You may look at class size in second grade and say, 17 to 20 is not a huge leap, uh, instructionally, and say, I want to, I want to non-renew to cover that base. And so, there may be bases in here that you want to cover. I mean, obviously, I mean, I, you know, I could be out in the audience just as well as any of them, just advocating that anything, these are, these are, um, they're unacceptable. They're, we're dealing with, um, a budget where, where nothing is acceptable, frankly. And, and so, so you're trying to make quality choices. So, you may see those things there. You may, um, and, and anything that, that impacts a professional position, to explain it, the law, um, if you were to read the appropriate law about the 18, the April 15th notification, it's, it uses the word teachers. But over time, that has evolved. And the, and the interpretation that, that I, that I think is most appropriate, that I, I sense that DOE uses, is any position that requires certification. So, any position that requires certification really should be being presented to the board by the 15th. And so, um, so it's, uh, if you think there's a potential there, I'm just saying, non-renew, hold it back until you, you really have your, your feet planted into a, a plan that you can stand by. That's all.
And I think, and as, as a board member, too, we walk that fine line between, we, we have hired and our administrators, and they have a specific job to make these types of recommendations to us. So, we walk that fine line between, they've made many recommendations now. And it's not our job to micromanage, but it is our job to question and analyze. And I, you know, that's such a kind of dicey area sometimes, because the administrators have worked really hard at making this proposal. Is this popular? Absolutely not. But we have to do something. So, I think if we can continue to question some of this, it's to everybody's benefit.
Well said. I think, you know, the, the role of the, of the school board is fundamentally to set policy and bring a budget to the community and hire a superintendent. Those, that's, those are our three, you know, legal charges. And, um, kind of taking a step back to the policy piece, um, it's, you know, it comes to values and, and, you know, then I start looking at the mission statement. And, um, something that just keeps dripping through that is, um, engagement of students. Keeping, keeping every kid connected. And I think this, a lot of the people that spoke tonight, you know, spoke to, in different ways, about how our school district is small. It's, in some ways, it's, it's physically small, but also, there's so many personal connections that, um, it feels small, because everyone is, is connected to everyone else. And, and that's a huge feather in the cap, I think, of the district, is that, and part of the, the low dropout rate piece, is that kids have someone they can connect to, whether it's, um, a coach or some other person that is a direct classroom instructor or an advisory instructor or, um, someone in, in other roles. So, I guess, I'd just like to voice that that piece is very valuable to me in, in, in our mission, in, and as I underlined it in, in the mission, in every child. We, we're here for every child, not just the middle-of-the-road kids, not just the kids that need help because of a special need or because of the kids that might be excelling. We're, we're, we need to be, we need to be all things to all kids, and we can't do that in a way, um, just by providing a, a cookie-cutter approach. So, it's, I guess that's my big for creativity in making sure that we, if we choose one of these bad choices, um, that we do our best to, um, make the, the smallest impact on keeping kids engaged. And that's something I think I need to, I, I know I need more time to, um, to process. The, um, I, I don't know if, if it's helpful to, um, to provide things that I find, you know, or that we all find particularly distasteful of the, I mean, it's, it's hard to, you know, it's hard to pick favorites or, or least favorites, but, um, I'm kind of feeling that we need to give our administrative team a little bit of, of, of what our thinking is. You know, for example, maybe I'll, I'll start it, maybe I don't, I'll tread in dangerous waters, but here goes. The, you know, the New Hampshire Scholars Program is something that we've, uh, that's only been, I think, around for a few years, but, um, is basically a curriculum that the guidance department has made very well-known, I think, to eighth graders of, these are the, if you take these classes, it will, A, put you in a position where, um, your limitations of, of what types of colleges you can apply to is, is minimal. And you, you're on this New Hampshire Scholars, uh, program, um, and it involves, I think, three years of foreign language. And to, to tell a kid who's a, a junior in, in high school that they can't take French next year, um, in a, in a regular classroom setting, um, that's, um, that's, that's something I'm not comfortable with. There's some discussion about, um, you know, finding another way in, um, in your, in the spreadsheet, but, you know, will our options present ourselves if we, if we only have an, a part-time educator in that role? Can, you know, is that a realistic thing to expect to, to be able to provide those kids with, that I think we, we've made a commitment? So, if we're going to phase out a, if we're going to eliminate a foreign language, I think we need to do it in a phased approach. And I'm a little bit afraid of, um, of doing that, notwithstanding all of the, um, the other pieces of, um, engaging students, et cetera. notwithstanding all of the other pieces of engaging students, et cetera. So, there, I jumped on the slippery slope. Anyone want to join me?
Yep. So, we're identifying things that we could not possibly support moving forward.
Yeah.
I would say the grade-two teacher. I just, knowing the research on early intervention and those early years, not to minimize middle school, junior school, everybody can guess where my kids are, I guess what kid building they attend, but I would not entertain the fact that we need to eliminate a grade-two teacher. I can keep going, but I don't want to dominate this.
Well, I'll jump in, I guess, sorry. The early intervention piece, you know, you alluded to it earlier, Meg, with the Jump Start program. It seems to me, maybe, an analog to what the state is doing, that, you know, we're cutting, we're hitting, you know, all these programs, whether it's education or Health and Human Services so hard. I'm going to guess there's going to be situations where we'll find out several years down the road that we've made some very expensive choices because of what we're dealing with in an emergency room setting, or what we're dealing with a kid who isn't engaged in school because we lost him or her when they were very young, and because, you know, school was all about learning to read, rather than all of those other things of kindergarten that were spoken of earlier. So, the Jump Start program, I guess, I'll need more of a sell to appreciate how we can really do those things in other ways, and not lose, risk losing kids.
As we see it right now, to try and answer it briefly, those students would still have an extended-day experience, either by being in the morning and afternoon sessions, or by, if the numbers fall our way, actually having a full-day kindergarten section. So, there's some potential for that, that would not only serve their needs, but some other special-needs students. When we looked at these cuts, at least certainly the first ones, we recommended, were how can we do, serve the same things programmatically, but maybe in a different way? And for Jump Start, that's what struck us, that it, because of the numbers, the way the numbers are breaking in kindergarten, the way the numbers may be breaking in that program, that we can incorporate those students that are high-risk or in greater need, and still give them an extended-day experience. And I'm hoping it falls in a way that we can offer full-day kindergarten. To me, that's the biggest win of all, but we still need to see how the numbers fall out. But in any case, that's what's anticipated there. It's not to leave those students alone and not address their needs, it's just to do it in a different way.
Okay.
Speaking of the Jump Start program, one of the questions I had asked was the number of students in the program. Last year, there were fifteen, this year, there are twelve. Can you say that again? Last year, there were fifteen students in the Jump Start program, this year, there's twelve.
That's like a kindergarten classroom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they don't meet all at once.
Right.
They kind of rotate through several other times.
Yeah. I would just hate to regress back to the model where we're having kindergarten kids not liking to come to school because all they're doing is reading those Scott Forrestman booklets. So, and I know that's not what administration wants to do, either.
You've got something else on your mind, though, Meg, too?
No, I'll share, and then I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
Okay. I've put a lot of thought into the Special Education Building Coordinator position, because it is the only administrative position that's on this list. And it was a really, really, I mean, I put a lot of thought into it, just because I know a great deal about this position itself and the impact, and the explanation, I could really care less if somebody needs to answer phone calls for somebody, or, you know, complete additional paperwork, but what is most compelling for me is that person should have that expertise, that body of knowledge, to eliminate future legal implications. And I think that is the selling point for me. When we have 170 identified kids, that's a lot of kids, those are a lot of special ed kids here, and if you have a warm body at the table, making legal decisions procedurally, instructionally, we could find ourselves really, unfortunately, bringing in some more unanticipated legal expenses.
You mean if we didn't have some?
Yes.
If we had the wrong person in that role.
I don't think one person can do it.
But don't principals do that in other school districts?
Not districts I'm familiar with.
Me neither.
Yeah.
What you have to have at the meeting, present at the meeting, is someone who is well-versed in special ed, and as you're saying, special education law, that can conduct that meeting in a way that's in full compliance and provide an IEP at the end, if that's the purpose of the meeting. You also need to have, it says in here, LEA representation in the law, that gets interpreted as somebody who has the authority to commit the resources of the district right there in the meeting. And by resources, it may be personnel, it may be saying, yes, we'll approve a parent, yes, we'll approve an out-of-district placement, and it's their word that commits the district to that. You can't say, well, we'll get back to you. You know, so there's that administrative need that is really specialized, that you need to have there, and yes, you, you know, I mean, I've been in districts before, before, where they did have principals there, and I agree with you, I think you really run some significant risks by doing that.
Dr. Hayes, was there any consideration, lock your ears, administrators, of looking possibly at assistant principal positions? Was there discussion in, because there's three administrators?
No, there wasn't.
Okay.
No, there wasn't.
Not necessarily thinking middle school, middle, senior, but maybe the elementary school?
Maybe the elementary.
Of three, okay.
You know, you've got some large, large population with lots of, lots of needs.
Right, no, I know.
You know, not the least of which is what the bullying law now has brought into administration, it's huge. And certainly, the state standards do call for, I believe it's one assistant principal for every, the first 500 students, and we're beyond that.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask about the Special Ed Building Coordinators? Having these people, you know, sitting at the table, so we have two building coordinators who are able to sit at the table, and then a director of special ed who's able to sit at the table?
And does from time to time on certain things, but there's a lot, a lot else.
So, I mean, technically, we have three people who could sit at the table.
Seems a little top-heavy to me.
So, could we, so if we did, we would still have two, I guess, we would still have two people to cover that particular need that you find is most compelling.
Right, the legal aspect, but if you have 730 meetings with two people, that's, I just think.
But isn't it true that the case managers that we have in the school right now, Jean came to us and told us that other case managers in other districts have, like, 35 cases, and our, some of our teachers have, like, 12, or, you know, it's not like our case managers are overwrought right now, not that you don't have a lot of work to do, I get that, but if, in comparison, I just, I don't think that, in this time where we are right now, that we can afford to have two of those people doing the same thing.
I just think it's real risky, and I-
But we have a director of student services that can sit at the table, and even in his own explanation, he said the principal and assistant principal or case manager could sit at the table. I mean, I don't, is this true, or is this not true?
If the cut was made, that's how it would be implemented. It's high risk, that's all. And I will tell you, remember, we cut a case manager at each school to address-
Sure, I get that.
-the load, and-
But we also have a really good sped secretary, that I've heard all sorts of stuff about.
She's awesome, but there are, as you see in the data here, 730 meetings a year. I can tell you that there is a role to being special ed director, and it's not running IEP meetings and contacting parents about problems with the IEPs and all of that. It's really, it's really a very full role all by itself. So, can she go in and deal with it case by case? Sure, but to think that she's going to pick up a big piece of that is unreasonable. It just won't happen. There's too many other demands that if you don't, special ed is an area fraught with legal difficulties, and you really have to have people on top of it, or it's going to cost you, it's going to cost you.
I, you know, I'm looking at the, you know, the original recommendation, and, you know, under the SAU board, you know, the director of technology position fell under that, so, but, you know, to me, that is more district-wide, it's not really SAU, it just, I think it just so happens that he falls into that line item on the budget, because I don't even know why. So, I guess, you know, in looking at the cuts, you know, $300,000, I don't think that, I don't think that we're going to find $300,000 in non-consumables and things like that. I think we're going to need to make some tough choices, and I think it's going to come to people. And I'd like to see a person, maybe from the administrative side, because we're all going to, we're all going to have to take a hit, we're all going to have to pull up the bootstraps, we're all going to have to work hard, and that's why I would advocate that one of those building coordinators be one of the positions.
I'd actually be interested in knowing more about, I don't know what the right to say, it is, stopping our NEAS process?
Well, honestly, I wouldn't recommend that. I think it, yes, it has been, it has been a useful process to kind of do that self-examination, but remember what we're measuring ourselves against. This is, these are a set of standards that have been drawn up by colleagues, high schools around New England, to draw up standards to say, this is what a high school should be, and a middle school should be, and we should be striving to be better, and we should be striving to meet standards. And it's not unusual for, it's unusual for schools not to be in the accreditation process. It's not unusual for other professions as well, to go through accreditation, be they private schools, or hospitals, or universities, it's just, is a, to me, it's a good process because it show, it points the way to what we need to do to be a better school. And it's not to, you know, take a knock at where we are today, but clearly, if we do a self-examination and say, we're not doing what the prevailing standards are, and we need that, to me, we need that fulfilling self-examination from a visiting team, and we need to buy into this process, because it is a continuing process. It's not like, okay, we've come in, we've visited, and here's what we say. Now, it's a commitment, commitment from the school and the community to say that we're going to keep striving to reach these standards, to be a better school, and that has great dividends for our kids and our community to not, take the reverse, to not be accredited, sends a very bad message about the quality of education, regardless. And I realize it's all about, it's all about perceptions, just like, we do a great job within the school, somebody said that, absolutely right, and some people knock us, and it's because of the perception of that facility. But it's the same thing with accreditation, schools that, people expect that high schools, at least, are accredited, and to not be accredited, people want to understand why. It's a rarity, I think, I'm not sure, but I think you can count on one hand the number of high schools in the state that have not engaged in this process, and it's, to me, it's really an important thing if we're going to rise to higher levels.
I always feel compelled, when we talk about accreditation, to confirm that we are accredited, we're just not accredited by NEAS, so, I don't, because, you know, there may be people listening for the first time, or whatever, who don't realize that, so I don't want the perception out there that we're not accredited, because we are an accredited school, we're just not accredited by NEAS, so, which is not to say that that's not an important accreditation to strive for, but I don't want people thinking, oh, my gosh, my kid is about to graduate from a school that's not accredited. Yes, we're accredited.
Let me speak to that again. There are, the state has its own set of standards as to what it expects in schools, and we have to report, and we've done that, as to, are we meeting those standards, and we do get approval or approved school from the state. The entire country, actually, is divided into six regions, and in each region, there is an accrediting agency, so it really is not just a local New England thing, it's a national thing, that, again, and New England Association of Schools and Colleges is the association that handles public schools, private schools, universities, and so they are the ones who set the standard, and when I say "they," we are the members, schools are the members, it's not some people on high saying things that don't have reality in schools.
And, you know, I've been thinking about that, you know, it's $25,000 if we can find a couple more of those, now we're saving a position, but I'm not sensing that, you know, next year is going to be a whole lot easier, as far as the budget goes. Yeah, we'll have the opportunity to go before the voters and say, you know what, this is what we need, and it will be, you know, the second year of a biennial-based budget, so the, we shouldn't have a surprise like we had this year, but I've been accused of being an optimist before.
State legislator may get up and come after me, but I'm going to tell you what my perception is as to what's happening at the state level and go down the road. I think, you know, if you read through some of the comments from one legislator, it was getting rid of the mandates and things that drive us, and giving the flexibility to make our decisions as to what we want in education. Personally, I think the state should be in the business of saying, this what should be in all our schools. I feel like the state may end up saying, well, you don't need to do phys ed, you don't need to do, you can if you want. And, okay, we can if we want. I think where this is headed down the road is that set of required versus optional leads to changes in adequacy aid in state funding. I could be wrong, but I'm just giving you how I see the future, that the state funding will be diminished, and, okay, Newmarket, if you really want to have phys ed, you pay for the full freight, and so, there are things afoot, and, you know, you can't blame the legislature in some respects, because they have their own budget problems, that's what they're struggling with, but that's what, that is the appearance that it has to me in terms of where the funding problem in the future may go, and I think it goes much more on the backs of the local taxpayer than it is today.
So, hooking into that, I guess, to complete my thought, is if we take, you know, postpone our NEAS, or decide, cut our losses, what we're doing is removing a third party looking at us from the outside, and as education professionals, judging us compared to a regional or national standard, the things that we might be overlooking because we're on such a budget pressure, you know, where we decided that, you know, we're not going to fund program X, that might be a critical piece to some of the NEAS standards for good educational competency reasons. So, and if we cut that off, now we don't have that outside observation saying, you know what, you should be doing a better job with this, you need to find, you know, we said we'd find a way, and, you know, this program would pick up the slack for that, but if it doesn't really happen that way, then we've just made ourselves feel better about cutting a program and not serving the kids. about cutting a program and not serving the kids. I hope that was coherent.
I'm not saying that NEASC is not important.
Oh.
I'm just saying that maybe it's not something we need to, to finish paying for right now when it comes down to eliminating people in the building. Obviously, it's important. All these people have done all the work during all their staff development. I mean, Nancy's put in who knows how many hours in doing it. It's not, there's not a question about whether it needs to be done. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't been NEASC accrediteded in how many years the school's been there?
Never has.
We've never been. So if we're faced with this crisis right now, is that really, does that really need to be our priority?
Well, and the other question about it is if, if we, so we've gone through the process up to where we are right now. I mean, if we postpone it, do we have to start all over again? I don't know how that.
I don't either. I don't know.
I don't know if you can.
You do.
My, my, I would bet that you do. My, I've been working high schools for a long time, been with NESC for a number of different ways. And my experience is there's a real rigidity to the way they do business. And, I mean, you know, Chris feels the same way, but I, but, I think if you were to say, we want, we want to put off a year, I think they'll say, then you got to restart it. I don't think it's, okay, we'll come back, you know, a year from now and.
Just can't put the, put the paperwork on ice.
They're very, as I've experienced in a number of districts, they're a very rigid group. I mean, I, I can remember times where, twice in my career, where we thought we had really compelling reasons to say, look, we can't host you in the fall. We, can you come in the spring? And the answer is, no, we're coming. That's it. And we thought it was a very compelling case or we wouldn't have asked. And so that's been my experience, very, very rigid to their rules, their schedules. And your local problems aren't, aren't something that way big with them.
So we have a few areas where it looks like we're looking for more information, but I'm feeling.
I want to say. Personally, I do not want to see us cut middle school athletics. I think that is a very important phase of a young student coming in from the elementary school into the big house, which is a high school. I think it's important for them to have that transition in sports.
What about pay to play?
I don't think you're going to find that many students that are going to be interested in doing that in their parents. I think you're going to lose a lot of students.
What if we, you know, you built a model that was a need base, say driven by free and reduced lunch or something? So if you were in that program, you didn't have to pay, but if you.
It's a possibility.
I'm not necessarily advocating for it. I just want to kind of throw it out there for discussion.
I, I just want to see that program stay. That's basically.
And as far as that goes, you know, having children that have played sports through, through the years, they already are paying to play. Trust me. The amount of money that we have to spend on the sneakers and the this and the, and it's not because they need new sneakers. It's because the team requires that they all have matching sneakers and, you know. So we're already paying to play and, you know, I'm, I'm a family that wouldn't qualify under the free and reduced lunch program. But it was, but it's still difficult for me. And I can just imagine that I'm not alone in this town in saying that, that paying to play would be really a difficult thing.
If I could, if I could add to that conversation, I totally agree with what was said about middle school athletics. Would never want to, to see it go. I think it is a great hook for kids that it's an important part of their school life. Having spent too many years in, in, in a pay-to-play scenario, I will tell you that it is an incredibly slippery slope. I remember the day when the school committee in Beverly first made that decision. And, you know, they, they thought they had it, okay, this will be the scale and it's affordable and we'll do these things for people on free and reduced lunch. And once you open that door, it raises other questions. I mean, we had a, we had a band program, for example. How come, how come the band doesn't have to pay, play, pay and the athletes do? How come kids in the chess club? And so, and so you start down that road. That's one, how come the kids were taking instrumental music? You mean, we're not? And so you start, all of a sudden, a challenged board looking for any kind of revenue to keep things alive. They look at it and they say, well, rather than cut the JV program, we'll, we'll increase the fee by $200. I mean, by the time I left, there was a three-tiered scale that I think at the top, what was it? $500 per sport. And, and that's on top of, not only kids doing athletics. We had an enrichment program that parents were, right?
Paid for that.
And they were ready to cut that. And I will tell you, the time I left, I think, third grade, third grader, each third grader was $600. Each fourth and fifth was $900 and there was no cap. So if you have little kids, before you end up, you, you end up with this huge tax on families and it's so hard. I mean, I passionately said, before I leave this district, I am getting rid of user fees. And if you go into Massachusetts, you'll see it is a way of life across the state that, you know, you'll ruin the day you ever go down there. I'm telling you. So stay, stay away from it.
And it also adds a whole nother, we collected over a million dollars of revenue there. I had to add a person in my office because that's all.
To manage the revenue.
And the collections.
Some people didn't pay. It was like a nightmare. And then if you say that kindergarten, our kindergarten costs $4,000 a student for full-day kindergarten, in addition to that, you had to figure out at least half your population is going to get free or reduced. So if you thought you were going to get 800,000, you're only going to get about 400,000. When the economy went, our revenues went. And then we were always trying to cut expenses and to make up for the revenue we lost. It was a nightmare. And the one year, the, the thing I guess I would say about middle school sports is that one year we increased the fee for the elementary music and band program. And we practically went out of business. They stopped. The kids couldn't afford it and families had so many other things to pay for, they couldn't do it. And that was the one they let drop.
Talk me right out of that one.
The only fee that had staying power, because kids liked to drive to school. Kids were charged $175 if they wanted to park on our school. Dollar a day. And it was only seniors.
And there was no free reduced lunch for that.
There's no free reduced lunch. And we collected that revenue. They do want to drive, but don't go there.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Well, I think there was a little lady who asked about the ESOL program and what would happen if that teacher left? How would we absorb that?
We have, I think we'll be properly staffed to deal with students. We have diminishing numbers, I understand. You know, the need to have that serviced within schools, but we have diminishing numbers. So we will have an ESOL teacher. We will have a paraprofessional. And, and the way, these are not, they're not taught as self-contained classrooms. They're very much a support, I mean, there is some self-contained elements to it, but they're very much supportive of the students as they're in the regular classroom. And so, so we feel like with the one teacher and the one paraprofessional, they can, they can schedule themselves in a way to serve the needs at both schools.
I guess part of, you know, to answer that question too, if, you know, if we lose our one ESOL teacher, how is that different from we losing our one teacher that teaches, you know, fill in the blank of, you know, being a small district, we don't have much redundancy in, in some areas. What's that?
I have another question. I think Nancy Miller brought up the idea of staff development. Are we required to, to do, to pay for staff development? I mean, is that something that we, not that I don't want to, but I don't.
Part of that is in the agreement.
Some of the funds are by contract, the amount, there's an amount that we have to set aside in the contract for that certain purpose. So, so a number of these things are contractual. Some, some under, they're more travel sometimes. It's getting, getting kids to sites and so forth. But my recollection that when you sift through all of the stuff, you end up maybe with, was it 14,000?
You asked that question, didn't you?
That might be, might be up for grabs.
Yeah. And, and like I said in my email today, that I had sent an email to the business administrator asking about conferences and, you know, what, what was our line item for conferences for next year? Because, you know, given the situation, maybe we need to not send anyone to any, or, you know, or severely limit. And, yeah, the majority of it is contractual. But there is 14, five in conference travel for administrators and then 300 for us. And I say, you know what, those, those need to go for next year. I don't, I don't, I just don't see that. But, but what I also said in my email is that I really don't, that's $14,000 and that's a lot of money. But I think that the cuts that we're going to be making are going to create new expenses for us. So, so the little dribs and drabs of money from things like this, I think we're going to be spending with the patchworks that we have to do with some of these major cuts that we have to make. So, so I, so I guess I'm not banking on that 14,000 to save a position. I'm banking on that 14,000 to help cover the expenses of the positions that we have to cut. If that makes any sense. No?
Wouldn't, no, not to me it doesn't, but maybe I'm just getting tired. So in this plan, if this, if, say, we're going to recommend position A or whatever, there is an implementation to overcome loss and it's going to unfortunately fall on the shoulders of already existing staff is my understanding for most of these. So there wouldn't be a need except for perhaps the two paraprofessionals if we're eliminating the library media specialist. Is it?
I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, I, I want to go through and I want to add up all of these small items to see, you know, to see what we can save in terms of positions. But some positions, I, I just can't see for, I hope I'm wrong and I hope that Joan whips something up and sends it to us tomorrow and says, look at what.
Look at all this money we have.
Come on, go Joan. But I don't, I don't think that's going to happen. So I really think we're going to be cutting some positions. And with those cuts are going to, are going to be some added expenses that we didn't anticipate because we had to make cuts. We're going to have to spend money elsewhere. So these small incremental savings that we can find, like this 14,000, some of that can go to save maybe some positions. But a part of it is going to be spent because, because we have to make.
Dr. Hayes, in regards to the health position, that's mandated by the state. Are we going, that is mandated by the state, isn't it? Health teacher.
There's a health education component.
I think, I, I'm not sure it's a health position. I think there are different ways to deliver that.
Okay, that's what I was going to say to you.
But there's a requirement, yeah.
Will we be able to satisfy the state in, in regards to what you have proposed?
I'm not happy with that as a cut, if that answers your question. I think, I think, I think to meet what the, the state may require, yeah, we, we perhaps, perhaps could. But, but the reality is there's so much more we should be doing with, with kids beyond what's mandated. And, and I think, I think we're perhaps kidding ourselves, even though it's on there. I had to give you something to consider. But if, if, if you incorporate that within other programs, it doesn't get the justice, I think, that it really deserves in this day and age. So, yeah, it's on there, but that, that's how I perceive it happening. Could you meet, could you meet requirements? Sure. We do as, as well as we, we possibly could. But it certainly wouldn't be equal to what we hope to be doing this year and next year because there are, there are considerable needs in educating kids relative to health, physical health, mental health and so forth.
Can you talk a little bit about the library media specialist scenario? And how you would envision that working if we were to go down that road?
Certification for library media specialist is a K-12 certification. And, and I certainly, you know, understand the point that was made about the difference between secondary level and elementary level. But it's not something that can't, it's a learning curve that's not insurmountable. I mean, obviously, there are skilled librarians and they, and they could, I think, whoever's left is, can fill that void pretty well. Putting a paraprofessional in each, in each, in each library, I think it's very likely that you can do a good job of handpicking people, that, that you will find people who say, wow, I like working libraries. I've worked in libraries. And so you might find people who already have the skillset of working in a library, but they're not certified library media specialists. So, so, and, and, and so then I see the remaining librarian as supervising these people and, and, and bringing them along in terms of the skills they need to help kids, help teachers, use the resources of the library and then spending whatever part of her day is necessary in one school or the other as the librarian. The, the state, in this instance, the state standards do call for a librarian in every school, very honestly. And, and yet we're, we're pressed to come up with solutions. I did contact the fellow at the Department of Education who heads up school accountability and asked him directly, here's what's being thought of as this legitimate. He said, yes, schools do do that. And the, the school systems do do that and they submit a waiver request, which we have always approved and I'm sure we'd approve yours.
And there are currently paraprofessionals working in, within either of the libraries? Or is it strictly just the librarians?
I think we just have a librarian, right.
Okay. So what would it be, and would it be a scenario where we could have just one paraprofessional? That, and, and maybe what happens is the paraprofessional in the library flip-flop? Like, you know, half the week at elementary? I'm just throwing out ideas.
It is, it is. I, I thought it was better to have the two, but I think that's, that's realistic. Think about the ESL as I described it. That's a scheduling piece that I think can happen. I think what you'd have to do is, is create a different schedule that says, all right, you're here for the day. Because otherwise, then you're shutting down the library for a period of time in order to do some travel. But, but yeah, I think you could do one. You could do one paraprofessional. I think you're better suited if you had the two. Because then there's, there's, you know, the paraprofessional, the, the learning curve is less because now they, all they need to really understand is how one library works, how elementary teachers work and how I can support that. As opposed to now I'm a K-12 library paraprofessional. And so it's more, it's a more, it's a bigger learning curve for them.
Could you use, to supplement that parent component, could you use parent volunteers in any capacity to keep the library open? Not necessarily provide the instructional component?
I have, I have seen that done. Where I worked before, all the elementary librarians were halftime. And we did as much as we could with volunteers to keep it open in other parts of the day. So it is, but you, you need some committed parents who say yes because teachers need to be able to count on the availability on a dependable basis, you know. And so that's, that's the only difficulty.
Dr. Hayes, could you, could you give us more information in regards to the consumer size teacher? Dr. Hayes, could you, could you give us more information in regards to the consumer science teacher?
I, I consider consumer science as one of those niche kind of courses that really can foster an interest in kids that doesn't get fostered in any other way. When we provide schedules to students, we certainly want them engaged in learning in a, in a variety of ways. We don't want them sitting in study halls. And so it's an elective program. I think it probably does inspire some kids to move on as, as career interests, or perhaps even culinary arts at vocational school. But, but I, I worry that eliminating that eliminates one of those niche type courses, and so, okay, where will those kids go? They have to think about, where will those kids go? All right, they're not taking consumer science, is there somehow or other elective that is attractive to them that also is on their, on their level and, and fits within the demand of their other schedule? Well, we'll end up in a study hall, that, that's my only, that's my worry. But, all right, there's no, there's not an ability to cover that particular subject area in a different way.
Can I clear up something that I think might be confusing for some people? The coaches' salaries that are listed on here, I don't, in no way does that mean we're getting rid of all coaches' salaries. It was just the money we had put aside to try and bring them up to that standard, correct?
The increase, right. The, the salary scale hasn't been addressed in fifteen years, and, and when you look at the new salary scale, for the most part, it, well, tries to bring people in line with what are competitive payments for, for coaching certain positions. There are some in which some of the positions actually are diminished, in order of saying, all right, this is a more competitive salary for this particular position. But, but that's what it is. It's been, you know, fifteen years at the same level, and, and so there was a proposal to, to try and shake that out to something more reasonable for, for what coaches get today, for the, the demands of the job.
I think Mike Lang said it best though earlier tonight, that when he's talked about the fact that he would do it for free, and I would bet a lot of our coaches feel that way, because, because we've been paying them so little, they're clearly not feeling it.
Pretty much not feeling it anyway. I understand, I understand. You know, we, in, in a lot of ways, in, in, in salaries, there are, there are inequities that have not been addressed for years, and we talked about this in the budget process, and so it's, it's, it's a road, we really try, need to start down so that people are properly compensated. It's not going to be solved in a year, but.
So, speaking of that, that brings to mind the, the two percent that we have in the budget for administrative salaries, and I, I, it is, it is, does represent an increase in pay for many people, but I, I also want to think about that in the same context as the coaches' salaries. Maybe two percent might not be the right number, but I, I do know that, you know, there's, there's inequities within the salary structure. The compensation that some individuals get is, is not on par with, with other districts, and it's not coherent within our district. And I think it's important that we make steps towards fixing some of those inequities. I know two percent isn't enough money to fix it all in one year, but I'm interested in making progress in that direction. But, so, I, I don't want to categorically say, you know, salary freeze for all administrators, and I don't see any way to do some of those fixes for some of our, of our staff that their pay is really out of line. And I don't want to get into specifics in, in this, in this setting, but I think that's something we need to be aware of. Clearly, anywhere in education, there isn't going to be a lot of growth openings for, for people to be, you know, that folks would be headed out of education, except perhaps openings created by people frustrated with working in the environment, but we need to do our best to be competitive with, with other districts. And it's, it's a bit of quicksand to walk in, but you know, I think it's important that we maintain something there so that we give the superintendent some, some latitude in, in some fixing, fixing some, some problems that have existed for years.
If I can add, add to that, first of all, it, it's a bit of a misnomer to refer to as administrative salaries. I know you do that, and I understand why.
Right.
But grouped into that pool of money are also classified staff, secretaries, custodians. I think that's primarily, primarily it, there's a couple others that are individual. But classified staff for whom they work on a pay scale that has not been revised since 2007, and, and some people have been, I believe, inappropriately placed even on that pay scale. So there's, so there's really secretarial and custodial staff for whom there are, there are inequities, and, and it's not, so it's not a two percent. And, and frankly, it is not meant to be a two percent across the board. I think in initial budget stages, it was meant to be that, but it really is a, a pool of money to address, to address inequities, as, as you have said. I mean, I, I will say, I've certainly said it to, to Cliff. I get paid, I get paid well for what I do. I work hard, I think I serve you well, but I get, compared as how people are paid in this district, I get paid very well for what I do. I have no interest in taking a raise, but I really want the ability to help people who, for whom they are terribly underpaid or have been slaughtered in the wrong position on a pay scale, and it should be corrected, and this kind of money helps me do that.
I'm not saying that I don't agree that people are underpaid. I think we all know that we're, our district has been severely underpaid for a long time. I just will say that I, I can't stomach giving people raises when we're cutting people's positions. It just, there's no way to reconcile that for me. I, I understand, and I agree with you completely, that, you know, I would love to give them more money, I would love to, but is now the right time to do that? When we're faced with this, is now the right time to do that?
And this was, this is about thirty thousand dollars, right around thirty-five thousand, right? So, do you feel that if that were cut in half and you had about fifteen thousand, that that would go far in maybe some of the inequities that you're needing to?
I, my first obligation, I feel, is to the classified staff. That's, and I would want to hold true to that, to be honest with you. That's, that's ten thousand dollars right there. So leaving me five thousand dollars to address, I believe, fifteen other, fifteen other positions doesn't, doesn't go a long way. That's true.
Any other tender subjects we want to dive into?
I'm just curious to, what the board's feelings are about the field trips for thirty-six thousand dollars? Does anybody have a, if we're making cuts? And it is a luxury.
Yeah, I mean, I would, it's not anything you want to take away from kids, because those are some of the things that they look forward to probably most during the year, but again, if we're talking about really dire times and people losing their jobs, you know.
And some of those creative ways, like the fundraising and parent donations, perhaps that could offset some of those expense or help provide some of those opportunities for our kids.
And that thirty-six thousand includes transportation costs, you know, the buses and everything, right?
Transportation and fees.
Yeah, I agree.
As much as I hate the continual parade of fundraisers. That it is, it is something you can say, you know, set up whatever the fundraiser is, I'll call it a bake sale. You can say, this is in support of our.
Ex-trip.
Yeah, the seventh grade trip to here, or, and, and then that, you know, and having the kids have the opportunity to talk about it and think about, oh yeah, this is a valuable thing to be raising money for. It, I think it, it could help the kids appreciate the, the trip as well, potentially more, so. I guess, well, what does that mean when it gets to, you know, what's the, is there a per-student trip average number that, you know, are we, you know, are we talking?
I can't imagine it. I think they're all over the map. It depends on where the trip is going, how many days.
There's a long travel piece to it.
Here's the elementary list alone, they're all over the place.
Right, right. Yeah, varies considerably. Number of kids, how long is the trip, where it's going, is there an admission fee, things like that. There's no real way to.
Right.
You know, I mean, you could, you know, as, and, and frankly, if you remember when we built, to get to the budget that was approved by voters, we had to make cuts. You talk about the building budgets, remember we cut that by twenty percent beyond what was initially requested. My recollection is similar in the area of field trips. We took a request and then said, well, we can't fully fund that, let's pare it back to this, and administrator said, we'll do the best we can to make it work.
Right.
And so if you were to reduce that and allow them some money to, to work with, the same message, we'll do the best we can with what dollars we have, and they could try to fundraise others, so. Just a thought.
And, and having spent the entire year fundraising for graduate graduation, it is so much work. We're trying to raise twenty thousand dollars, we're not there. It is so much work, and I don't want anyone to think that that would be an easy, thirty-six thousand would be an easy task to fundraise, because it's a killer. It really is a killer. Fundraising is tough business.
And you, all of these fundraisers are always asking the same folks.
And we've all got our hands out to the same people.
So are there some of these things that it makes sense to, to go partway, like for field trips, if we, if we cut that number by some amount and then ask the administrators to do what they can, and choose to fundraise wherever, or do we want to, does it make sense to partially, you know, you know, reduce the amount of difference for the coaches' salaries and move in the direction we need to go, but don't do it, don't make as much progress in one year? You know, if those were both half, you know, we're still only talking twenty or thirty thousand dollars, which is ten percent of what we need.
I think I understand what you're asking, if you like. You know, again, obviously I'm going to go back and work with the administration and others.
Yeah.
And we'll take a look at that and come back, you know, next time with a proposal to say, here's.
If we could, you know, some of these minor things, if we can, there was more than one comment made that, you know, if you, if you watch the pennies, you know, some of the other things will, it'll, it'll help, and if we can, you know, excuse the expression, but a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, it'll add up to real money. It's a thousand dollars wasn't real money. But I think there's value in doing some of the little things, as well as, education is, it's a people business, it's, you know, the things, you know, maybe we can find a couple of smartboards or, or other lab equipment, or things that we can choose to delay or not do. But that's, when you look at the pie graph, that's, that's our expenses, it's salary and benefits.
It's a small, small piece, you're absolutely right.
So, there's no, I don't think there's any way around it. So are we at a point where you have a list that?
I have, I have direction.
That is possible to, to answer some of these questions?
Yeah, do the best we can with it.
All right. Is there anything else people want to talk about? Meg, I'm sure you've got something else.
I'm just still mulling around that idea that Dr., that Dr. Hayes had presented about buying us some more time. I mean, we need to, we need to come up with this cut, but perhaps, being an optimist myself, maybe we won't have to by June thirtieth, and then everything will be okay. But maybe, maybe I could just call you tomorrow and you can, when I can think more clearly, you can explain that to me a little bit better.
It's, it's really difficult to judge what could be happening at the legislature, and how pressure moves decisions.
Right.
You know, we could get to June, and maybe we're looking at a two-hundred thousand dollar cut, and, and we just don't know. But the best estimate right now is the three-hundred thousand, and it won't grow, so.
So, I mean, but the reality is that by April fifteenth, we need to let, oh, I know, that's what he said, that he would, yeah. We need to let people know. So, so we need to make the decision, I guess, as a board, do we, do we want to have say in what those positions are? You know, or do we just, you know, let, let, what am I trying to say? We have one more school board meeting.
Yes.
And at the next school board meeting, we have, Dr. Hayes is going to present us with the renewals for next year.
I think, Dr. Hayes, you want an answer tonight, that you're looking for?
I don't think I, I mean, I, I think you've given some direction.
Okay.
I, I do believe I need to come back to you on the seventh with.
The list.
A list of nominations that also preserves some flexibility to you, and we can debate them on the seventh, but that preserves some flexibility going forward, because once you enjoin them to a contract for next year, you've lost that flexibility. So it's really important you retain that. Now, you may only need it until the end of April, or the first of May, or whatever, but, but you need flexibility beyond the fifteenth.
How do you feel about that, coming back on April seventh, with that amount of time?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I guess my, my point that I'm, I'm not thrilled with the original recommendations, and I'd like to see a few changes. So, so if this is what, so if this is what comes to me next week, you know, then I, I don't feel that I can support it.
Yeah, I'm with you.
When you refer to the original, are you, the March twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think that, then the important thing is that between now and then, individuals can make their concerns known, so that, what we, what we don't want to do is, knowing that we need to prepare for a three-hundred thousand dollar deficit, say that we're comfortable with making a hundred thousand dollars worth of changes, and then coming up terribly short. If anything, we need to err on the side of four-hundred thousand dollar budgetary change, which then gives us the ability at that meeting to bring things back.
Totally agree.
And if, if that means that, you know, more people, more of our, our dedicated staff are, are not formally renewed, sadly, I think we're, that's the best we can do at that point in time. Is that?
I'd like to have a little more conversation on the. I'd like to have a little more conversation on the March 24th one. What is it on there here, that's here that the people don't agree?
That I'm not supportive of?
Yes.
Personally, I am not supportive of the Jump Start cut. That's my first one.
All right.
And, and second, I'm a numbers person and I've been asking for numbers all day and I, I need to know, how many kids does this affect, how many, you know, and, and the school to career based on, that has been the overwhelming program that I got feedback on from, from community members, from our speakers tonight, from some students. So, you know, when I, last week, you know, and I think I expressed how I felt like, you know, to say that, and not that we, that any of us were saying this, that we could patchwork things together, but I wanted to make it clear, and I think Chris made it very clear, that this isn't gonna, we're not going to be able to offer what Nancy is currently offering. We're going to make do. And I think Chris said that, and I think we all agree that that is what would happen if we had to cut that position. And last week, when I first read this list, I thought, boy, that really stinks. But yeah, I guess, I guess that makes sense, and now I'm not feeling so much that way after all of the feedback that I've had from so many people. And just under, after the reflection that I've been able to have.
But we're gonna have to cut something.
Absolutely.
It's a make-do situation, unfortunately.
It is a make-do situation, and I think I'd feel better making do, quite frankly, with cutting a, a special ed building coordinator, and I'm, I'm looking at the library piece. Those are, those are the ones, I'm more comfortable with that than I am with those. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. And they all stink. They all stinks.
So, it sounds like having a better, maybe scenario painted of the Jump Start program, of how those kids would be served, I don't know if we need, sometimes a visual is helpful or.
And I'll tell you, I, you know, Jean sent me some, you know, a great email today and talked about some of that stuff, and I don't know if you want to, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, I don't know if you want Jean to kind of talk a little bit about.
Any administrator is here to be on the spot. So, Jean, why, come up and speak to it a bit, because again, I think of all, of all the cuts, that's one that I think provides continuity.
Jump Start?
To be honest with you.
Jean?
Yeah.
I have the email too, if you want to refer to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Linda just handed me the email that I had given to her earlier, it's got some numbers in it, so I do appreciate that. At this hour of the night, remembering numbers is a challenge. We had, we had come up with a couple of different scenarios that would be the way that we could address the absence of the Jump Start program as we have it right now. And there are currently three kindergarten teachers, and each one teaches two sessions of kindergarten for a total of six sessions. One of the ways, because we suspect our numbers are going to remain about what they are, and I gave the example that last, last year, Scott, I got these numbers from Scott Thompson, last year we handed out 85 kindergarten registration packets and 70 students enrolled. This year, we only sent out 65. We send out to what we can find. Scott literally beats down the bushes to try to find where kids are, whether they're in private nursery programs or private daycares or folks living in the community who have children at home. We sent out 65 packets. So, based on that, I'm guessing it's probably safe to say that we're not going to have less than we have this year. I don't think we can count on having less, I mean, I don't think we're going to have more than we have this year. I said that wrong. We could have less, but I don't think we're going to have more. We've sent out, you know, a good number of, a good reduced number of packets to begin with. So, we also have very few children coming up from preschool who are special needs who will be entering kindergarten. It's two or three kids, that's all it is. And they're not wildly handicapped students either, they're mildly handicapped. So that makes, puts less pressure on teachers for spending additional time. So, one of the things with those, with those ideas in mind, those background pieces of information, what we know is, is that we could take those six sessions of kindergarten, one of the scenarios would be to take one session, one teacher, to make that into a full-day kindergarten. So we'd have five sessions of kindergarten instead of six. We could keep class sizes roughly the same, still very low, we have a kindergarten, kindergarten classrooms already have a paraprofessional in them that would remain, and we would have one full-day session, and that full-day session would not be a lottery session, it would be a session where we put the students who would have been in Jump Start and given them extra time in that kindergarten program. That would also, should there move in, should we have youngsters move into the district who have autism, which is a high need area of development, the National Boards on Autism and our state government has also recommended a minimum of 25 hours a week for students on the spectrum in those young years before they're full-time in school. So that would be another way that we could keep them in district if we had a full-day kindergarten. Right now, we do a lot of patchwork to try to get in that number of hours. Another situation would be to still have six separate sessions of preschool, of kindergarten as we do, but have some students stay for a second session, either stay for a second session with the same teacher or go to a second session with another teacher, which would give them a chance to have a second session. And for many students, repetition and an extra chance to practice is a really valuable opportunity. And if we had, so example, we might have Group A that comes to kindergarten teacher, I'm just going to say Mary, okay? Kindergarten teacher Mary has Group A in the morning. In the afternoon, she might have half of Group A stay for a second session, and then she'd have a small Group B come in to make her whole day. Or, she might have A group in the morning and C group in the afternoon, and the extra A students and the little B group might go to a different teacher in the afternoon. So those are two ways that we could do it without impacting the numbers we have at all. With the potential for really tiny classes next year, we could have some really small kindergarten classes. This year, they're really small. We have roughly 13 kids, and that's, we could easily go to 16 or 17, and if we had to go that high, and still have a really nice situation with, with a full-time teacher and a paraprofessional in the room. I think that that would, would, I don't see any problems with eliminating Jump Start with that scenario, those scenarios right at our fingertips with our three existing full-time kindergarten teachers. Any questions?
Thank you.
Very well explained.
I'm going to give this back to Linda.
At this late hour, I'm impressed.
I had it, I had my cheat sheet.
Thanks.
So the trick will be then, in my mind, what do we do when we see the next bump of students, but that.
The bubble.
Is something that we can hopefully plan for in another budget cycle.
And I just keep thinking of the, the presentation that we got earlier this year. And how, at the end of it, we're like, oh gosh, how can we have another, how can we, what do we need to do to get more kids in the Jump Start program? Does it mean that we need to have another teacher, a Jump Start teacher? You know, how do we expand that program? So, that's why it's so hard for me to consider.
Having, having, you know, overseeing school district that, that has full-day kindergarten, wait till you get the presentation on the curriculum that they can provide in a full day. It is, it's why the move really should be towards full-day kindergarten. There's, there's so much more opportunity in a full day to give the kids the kind of experience they really need to get the good start that they need. So, so again, that, I understand your impression, I was impressed with, I'm not saying I wasn't, I was very impressed with the presentation and what we do for kids, but full-day kindergarten is a step beyond that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of parents that would appreciate the option to have a full-day kindergarten too.
Oh, yeah.
What's our chat?
Didn't say anything.
Are you snoring down there, Chat?
No.
So, Mr. Chair, where, where are we right now? Where?
I'm feeling, well, Dr. Hayes mentioned earlier that he found, he felt comfortable that he had enough information to grind some numbers, so I guess I'm wanting the rest of us to feel that same way too, and as soon as we are, I'm looking forward to letting him go home and take a short nap before he gets back at it again.
And see what the weather's like.
Oh, yeah. We got that snowstorm coming.
So, I, so that's, that's, I guess, the question is, just giving a thumbs up that he's all set.
We're all set.
How are you?
Good.
Do you, do you feel like you've loaded him with enough challenges?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I feel that, I feel if there are other ways that we could possibly help preserve some positions, I would entertain that information. I'll stop there.
Okay. Linda?
Yes, I think that, I think that I've been heard. I think that you get where I'm coming from. I would ask Joan if you can run some reports and dump some stuff into spreadsheets for us in terms of non-salaried items, other, other things, other expenses that we can look at. Yeah, that would be good.
We'll be looking at those closer as an administrative team, see what we can do.
I, I guess I just, my point is I'd like to look at them too.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not saying not, I'm just saying.
No, I know.
Kelly?
I would just like to mirror Linda's sentiment in the school's career coordinator position. I could not support that cut. I too received a lot of emails and letters in the mail and, you know, all the people coming out, and I just, I feel like that's too much of a vital program for a lot of students. And I too would recommend adding a special education building coordinator in that place. I'm not for cutting middle school athletics. I wouldn't mind seeing staff development put in there. And I'm going to maintain that I still think the raises, the administrative and certified staff raises be put in there too. But I'll be happy to see what list we get, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's that, Meg?
It's like, everybody's like, just please be quiet, go home. See, I would entertain a reduction of the school to career coordinator and the library and media specialist. I think those are options that I, I would entertain. Along with adding a two paraprofessionals, so just to get a, give you a sense, because people have been vocal about their thoughts are. So I just want to be fair.
And I think, I thought that's what we were really kind of supposed, we were really coming here for tonight was kind of to say, this is what I can support, this is what I can't.
But until you, I mean, I mean, I hear lots of thoughts, but the time is going to come when you, you have to take a vote, and it might be, it might be a three to two vote, but.
Yep.
No, that's, that's.
Absolutely.
So I need to leave, I'm coming to you with options open based on things that I heard, and then eventually you're going to make a vote.
Yep.
So this is where I'm confused in our process, because here we have like a multitude of options, and we can play the numbers game, so are we going to go through each of these? Like, are you going to consolidate some of these for us? Because we could be there like, okay.
I sure am going to try.
Okay.
Because this is, you know, we've, we've been, we've been here a long time tonight. I think we've, we've all had enough probably, but we have to start honing it down to.
It's got to add up.
To a point where you're ready to say, I'm ready to make a decision, because, you know, as much as, as there has been, you know, we've struck a nerve with school to career, many things on here, you're going to strike a nerve with, and, you know, and if you, you know, and I've said this to others, I mean, you, you know, if you say we're eliminating the French program, you'll have 40 people saying, how could you be considering that? And so it's, you're in a very, very difficult spot. There is no popular decision. Accept that. There's no popular decision, and do what you, what you tell, feeling your gut is in the best interest of the school system, the best interest of kids, and then you have to live with that. And then we'll vote that up or down.
Okay.
That's good.
What was that, Kelly?
Motion to adjourn.
I thought that's what you said.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for your patience and your respect for the process.